I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of September 19. Would please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands in our nation and our indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would just take a moment to remember Bill Lekowski and Marlene Solomon, who both passed away in the last couple of weeks. And may we have the roll call, please Denise.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protimolson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Hernandez is absent.
Thank you. Okay, item number one. Our regulatory options for us to consider on cannabis in Avalon. And we have Mark with us today.
Yes, that's correct.
And your last name, I'm sorry.
Last name Tran, T-R-A-N. Sorry, Mark.
There's no sound.
There is sound.
Maybe closer to the mic, maybe. Is this better?
Okay, thank you, Ralph. My husband told me to sit closer to the mic, too.
Okay. Okay, I think it's working now. So I'm here today to discuss part two of cannabis regulatory options, regulatory options to be, to consider in regulating cannabis. It previously appeared before the council on August 1st for part one, which was a crash course on cannabis and the legal landscape in the wake of Proposition 64, which decriminalized recreational cannabis and SB 94, the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which I'll refer to as MALCURSA. And if you're having flashbacks to that very long presentation, I have good news. Today's is much shorter. So moving on to an overview of what I'll be discussing today. So I'll start off with a brief review of the current law in Avalon, move into a brief overview of regulatory options. And then sample ordinances, including the city of Adelanto's ordinance that allows a variety of cannabis-related activities, the city of Gustine's, which allows delivery services for medical cannabis only, and finally, the city of Azusa, which prohibits all cannabis-related activities except for residential indoor cultivation. And after that, I'll ask for direction from the council as to how to proceed with developing a, an ordinance. So, current law in Avalon, basically, there's not much that can be done when it comes to cannabis in Avalon at the moment. So, all cannabis-related activities are prohibited. So there's no brick-and-mortar dispensaries that are allowed, no mobile dispensaries, and no delivery services, and finally, cultivation is prohibited also. So with that in mind, moving into regulatory options. So there's different flavors of regulation, and it's very easy to customize or choose a path to move forward. It's a bit of a Goldilocks test. The council can choose to, one, do nothing. And a note about doing nothing, so MALCURSA prohibits licensing authorities from issuing a state license if approval will violate local regulations. So licensing authorities being the state itself. And of course, for this to work, the city has to have an ordinance or, you know, regulations on the books. However, even if the city doesn't adopt anything and remains silent on the issue, the state licensing authorities will notify the city in the event that it receives an application from someone looking to set up shop in the city. So, for example, if ABC Cannabis Corp decides, "I'm, I'm gonna open up a dispensary down the street, or across the street from City Hall," they would have to go to the state, file an application with the state, and the state would contact the city of Avalon, perhaps the city clerk's office, and say, "City, we've received an application from ABC Cannabis Corp. What are your regulations? Is this an appropriate place for this type of use? And does this particular applicant maybe have a history of doing business in the city? For example, have they been shut down before? Did they try to open an illegal dispensary? Something like that." So that they will contact the city to ask for some form of guidance, and the city will have a 60-day window to respond to the state. After the termination of that 60-day window, there's a presumption that the applicant is in compliance with local regulations, and the applicant can move forward from that point. However, even after the 60 days is up, the city can always notify the state and say, "Hey, you know what? Maybe it went to a spam inbox or something like that, but we're paying attention, and turns out ABC Cannabis Corp. was the subject of a, you know, code enforcement action back in 2011 or something like that, and we received, you know, a tip that maybe they're not, they don't have a business license, or any other complaint of that nature." And at that point, the state will pull the application. So it's not, you know, it's not game over at the end of the 60 days or anything like that. So that was a lot that I had to say about doing nothing, in any event. But moving on, so another option, or another flavor, if you will, is the city could allow all uses. So anything from a testing facility to test, you know, "Oh, it looks like this strain of cannabis that's offered by ABC Cannabis Corp. has 78% THC, 20% CBD, and, you know, other variations like that." And, you know, a testing facility can also provide additional information about what benefits a strain has, things like that. The city could also allow manufacturing, which alters, you know, the, the plant matter that comes off the plant itself into perhaps an oil or some other extract. So that would be a manufacturing use. The city could also allow cultivation, a dispensary, things like that. Another option is kind of a middle ground of sorts. So the city can say, "We don't want to allow any and all uses, but we, you know, we would like, for example, medical, medical cannabis to be allowed in the city, and maybe we want a storefront, or maybe we don't want a storefront, or perhaps a delivery service, something like that." And finally, the city can choose to prohibit most uses. And I say "most uses" because there is an important carve-out that the city must allow. So the city cannot prohibit residential indoor cultivation for personal use by individuals over the age of 21. And this is not to say that this activity is entirely exempted from any and all regulation. In fact, MALCURSA says, or authorizes the city to reasonably regulate such activity. Moving into sample ordinances, I'm taking a look at what other cities are doing. I'll start off with the city of Adelanto, which allows a variety of cannabis-related activities. And then I'll take a look at the city of Gustine, which allows deliveries of medical cannabis. And then finally, the city of Azusa, which prohibits all cannabis-related activities with the exception of residential indoor cultivation. So, starting off with Adelanto. Adelanto has a comprehensive regulatory scheme that allows manufacturing, cultivating, and dispensing of medical marijuana. I've attached the ordinance from the city of Adelanto to the staff report, and if you flip through, it's pretty dense, it's quite thorough. And Adelanto regulates the location and scale of cannabis-related activities through conditional use permits, zoning restrictions, and development agreements. So the city of Adelanto has a green zone, which is an overlay zone that they allow various cannabis-related activities to occur in, and that is a type of zoning restriction. They've also entered into development agreements with individual business entities that engage in this type of activity. And through the conditional use permits, you know, they can say, they can limit or otherwise restrict the type of activity that these businesses engage in. Moving on to Gustine. So they allow medical marijuana delivery services to private residences in this, in the city. And a note about this ordinance, this is, all these ordinances are attached to the staff report. This ordinance predates MALCURSA. And one significant development since that ordinance was adopted and current day is that a physical brick-and-mortar will be required. However, this physical location, even though it's required, it need not be a storefront, or it need not be open to the public, and sales may be conducted solely by delivery. So if ABC Cannabis Corp., you know, obtains a permit, obtains a license, and has all their entitlements in place, they can have a brick-and-mortar where they can use it as, you know, their headquarters, or a location where they store the cannabis or cannabis products, and they can have it, you know, basically off limits to the public. But it'll be a place where their delivery, delivery services can operate out of, and it can be a hub for their operation. But they are required to maintain a physical location, so they can't operate out of grandma's basement, or something like that, or, or solely through, you know, the back of the van or anything like that. They'd have to have this physical location.
Within the city.
Yes, in the city. Moving on to the city of Azusa. So Azusa prohibits medical cannabis in recreational or commercial cannabis establishments. And as I mentioned earlier, they allow, but reasonably regulate residential indoor cultivation for personal use. And in particular, they require that cultivators obtain a permit, consent to an inspection of the cultivation site, and secure the cultivation area. Azusa also requires a live scan or fingerprint-based background check from applicants. I will note that currently, there is a challenge to a city's residential indoor cultivation permitting scheme, and some of the challenges pertain to, you know, alleged violations of the Fourth Amendment right against search and seizure. That, that's connected to the inspection requirement, but one, one exception to the Fourth Amendment is administrative searches, or searches where, you know, in this case, an applicant consents to an inspection of the cultivation area. This has been, you know, deemed to be important because the, with indoor cultivation, there's a risk of local contamination to the building itself, risk of mold, faulty wiring, if people are stealing from their neighbors, you know, electricity, things like that. And also, there's a concern that, you know, the cultivation area should be separate from maybe a, a living area, so not right next to your bed, and not in your kitchen, you know, where there's a source of heat and a risk of fire, things like that. So...
Can I just ask?
Yes.
I guess I'm not, I'm somehow not reading this the right way. Azusa prohibits medical cannabis and recreational, commercial establishments. So it's, they prohibit the establishments, but they allow you to grow personally in your own home? Is that what I'm getting?
Yes, that's correct.
Because the state, okay. Okay.
Is there anything where they need to consent to the owner? If you're a renter?
Yes. So that could be another requirement that the city requests of applicants, and then, of course, that would require that, you know, the city set up a regulatory scheme that requires cultivators to come forward. And there are a number of cities that have required consent of the owner, and have, they also require a, an annual renewal in case, you know, the tenancy is terminated, or if, maybe the owner has sold the property to somebody else. But that's another way to allow, to require that cultivators kind of get a, a green light of sorts from the owner. For example, if a, an owner is leasing to a tenant, thinking that, "Oh, you know, Mark Tran will not cultivate marijuana, he doesn't smoke, and I, I sure hope he doesn't in the next year or so." That's a way for the city to require Mark Tran to go to the city and, go to the owner also, to say, "Hey, is it okay if I use your property, which you own, for this, this purpose?"
And just, is there, do they, or can they also regulate the number of plants that are grown?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great question. Yes, the state has capped it at six plants.
Oh, there's six.
Per, per residence. So if, if I, for example, you know, live in a bachelor pad with seven other guys, we can't have six each.
Right.
It'd be capped at the, the residence, at six. Okay. So that's what Azusa is doing. And then, next steps is my request for direction as to how to proceed with an ordinance. Going back to the regulatory flavors, you know, the council can do nothing, the council can allow some, council can allow some but not all, or prohibit most uses. Again, the carve-out being that the, the city can reasonably regulate but cannot prohibit outright indoor cultivation for personal use. Then also, something else to consider is whether, you know, there will be some uses permitted, but on the medical side, or commercial side, both, things like that. And then also, the question of whether the council wants to reasonably regulate residential indoor cultivation.
Cool. Are there, any questions from the audience? Okay, so far, so good. Oh, Rhonda? You need to come up, please. Thank you.
Just concerning this, so as far as the Azusa they were talking about, and the different requirements for the, for you to grow your plants, so is the law enforcement, they will be required to look after these, taking, making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing? So that's what you're saying here, obviously?
Yes, so that, that would be, that would be a code enforcement question, and usually just as a kind of general matter, how code enforcement works, is that a code enforcement department, or the police department will receive a complaint, maybe from a concerned neighbor, saying, "Hey, looks like Mark Tran is up at all hours. It, you know, I saw him bring in 20 plants into his residence." Something like that would kind of start that process. In terms of whether there's a annual inspection or a renewal inspection, I imagine either code enforcement or the police department would go in and make sure that, again, Mark Tran has six plants and only six plants, or maybe fewer than six, but no more than six. So again, I'm, a person isn't growing 20 plants, or 40 plants, 90 plants, something like that.
I would note for the record that both Adelanto and Azusa are BBK cities, and because of the marijuana regulation and the actual enforcement, we've actually hired two attorneys. The full-time job is to do code enforcement on types of marijuana. So cities are actually enacting the laws and enforcing it. So it's not just that they're passing it and not doing anything, but they are actually going out there and, and, you know, enforcing the rules.
Thank you, Scott. Does that sufficiently answer your questions?
Yeah, that answers my question. So I guess the other question would be, if that is the fact, will we be using our law enforcement to enforce the codes? And will they be taken from what they're doing now to enforce our laws to look at this?
So that's...
That's a good, really good question.
Didn't you just reiterate that, that, that is Mr. Tran, that code enforcement would pick it up, and then if they need to pass that on to law enforcement, they can do that?
I think you, I think you, don't you, you're using code in a broad sense, I think, aren't you?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. I'm using code in a broader sense, and to respond to Councilmember Sampson's question, I, I think that's kind of an internal kind of policy or process.
That's something we figure out?
I'm sorry.
That's probably something, I'm sorry, I didn't get, mean to get you off your train of thought. So that's something that basically we establish and we figure out, because I think that was a great, you raise a great point, Rhonda. Our, our police force is pretty busy right now. They're, you know, like most, most government departments, they're understaffed, so, just like we might be. And, but, you know, we work as efficiently as possible, so we gotta manage these things. I mean, and there's gonna be more money around if, if we do have some kind of a law in place that allows this, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
It, it occurs to me that there are different kinds of, could be, depending upon the type of ordinance you enact. One, if they're building regulations, for example, for growing to prevent the mold and the, and there needs to be special lighting or circuitry so that you don't create this, this mold that is very dangerous, that, that's a building, that could be a building code issue. There, if there's a nuisance with neighbors, non-criminal, then it could be a code enforcement function. If there's an alleged criminal violation, then it would be a law enforcement function. So there's really, and, and, and of course, it could be, I say our, our fine fire chief, it could be that, that there are fire code issues that would, that, so there's a whole group of, of, potentially, of people who could monitor whatever, or monitor, inspect, should there be reason to make an inspection.
Thank you. I would echo the city manager's kind of breakdown or explanation of that process. It, it could be that, you know, an applicant comes in and has, you know, little boxes they check off. Fire chief has inspected it, or designee has inspected it, has signed off, building has said, "It's okay, I'm not stealing electricity from my neighbor, there's no faulty wiring," things like that. And then, to kind of respond to the concern about the finances or strain on staff, in other cities, there have been studies, ranging from the more formal studies, use of consultant, into more informal estimates of, you know, well, okay, if a, an application comes in and lands at City Hall, how do we process it, and how much staff time will that take? You know, will this inspection take two hours from the building department, then two, two more hours from the fire department? That can kind of be used to project the cost of processing that application, and, you know, things like staff time, and potentially, the city could recover those costs from the applicant through the use of a fee, or something like that.
Paula, did you?
Paula had a question. Can I have a question? Well, I just, I have a couple of comments to make, is that we're leaving out one huge part of the picture. I want to bring it from a whole different perspective, in that, to me, this is just another kind of prohibition, and we're making it into something that I don't think needs to be. So as far as I read the law, it is only for people over 21, it is not allowed to be smoked in public. Am I incorrect about this?
Correct, so far.
Okay. That if you have...
Certain places in public.
So if you had a, a club that people could go to, and it had the license to have a smoking lounge, or whatever, that you could go there and smoke, but it can't be smoked on the streets walking around?
Certain areas it can. So your ordinance right now prohibits smoking in only certain designated areas?
Oh, this ordinance for our city?
Your current smoking ordinance. So you could, as part of whatever you're doing here, ban all outdoor inhalation of cannabis, yes.
You could do that.
But, but right now, your ordinance just says it's only in certain areas.
And then, the other thing that it says is, I believe, if you have a, this, this growing thing, is if you have a medical marijuana card, you can grow up to six plants in your house, period, right? Is that correct? Any adult. Okay, so those are three issues that you guys are considering here now. And to me, this is an adult choice, and I, I think it's the same thing we looked at, you know, with prohibition. It's just, you know, it was evil, and, you know, it's not re for madness anymore. It's, it is established in the world, and many places are doing it, and I don't think it's a heinous drug. For me, I see alcohol as mu, doing much more damage to our society, and it is a much bigger problem in this town. Then you're missing the one thing that is, what about revenues? I mean, you're talking about additional law enforcement, perhaps to, we're talking about code enforcement? I mean, has anybody done any kind of prospectus on exactly what this would do to augment our economy here? I mean, I, I don't know how the alcohol thing works for, but it seems like if it does, and we get some kind of revenue off taxes, we should be all billionaires here. I mean, to me, I, I think it's hypocritical, and I'm, I'm gonna lay this on the table, and I think it's, you know, like, you all know, because I sent you the letter, how I felt about, for whatever. I think, you know, we sold our souls to have an, an event, that we, we got a beautiful ball field, but you guys paid for it, too. And it's, you know, just, I just thought, to me, that was a kind of glorification of alcohol that was out for every young child to see, and it bummed me out. I thought it was a really, I thought, wow, what an example we're giving our kids. So, I just, I just, that's what I wanted to say. I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill. It's, it's, it's 2018, and now here we are at almost 100 years that prohibition ended, and I think it's kind of backwards to, to be looking at this. I don't think it's gonna be federally an issue for too much longer, and I realize it is illegal on a federal level, but in the state of California now. So I just wanted to say that. So, don't forget about the money you'll make, too.
And I would just note, for the record, it's, it's, you're required to make a decision by state law. So, and the council hasn't made a decision yet, that's the purpose of these study sessions, is to decide what to do. So there's no preconceived notion here, and again, state law is requiring, every city in California, right now it's having this debate, because state law said, "You gotta decide by January 1st."
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. First off, has pot cultivation ever been a real issue in this town? We have the sheriff here, we have the fire chief here. Has there been fires caused from people growing marijuana in their house?
Not from growing, I think from processing.
Have you had complaints? Have you had thefts? Have you had anything like that in the past? When you, when you first chose to take away that right, I see, for especially medical cardholders, I asked that question. Was it a real big problem?
And it was not, if you remember, from federal.
Right.
From Captain Federal, it was not a big problem.
Right, right, okay. So just keeping that in mind, all right. Must you regulate personal cultivation? Is that a state law, that it must be regulated? There has to be a regulation on the books?
No, you, what state law provides is that you can reasonably regulate it, and that goes to, for instance, do you want to make certain that if someone's gonna be, and it's indoor cultivation, so if they're gonna be put up lights, do you want the fire department to inspect the type of electricity that to grow? Do we want to put anything on water? You don't have to, but it allows the city to impose reasonable regulations. So again, that's an issue for the city to decide.
Oh, gee, excuse me. We, we are allowed to, to adopt our own ordinance as well, correct? Other words, it doesn't just have to be indoors, indoor cultivation, correct? I mean, we can make an ordinance that allows, like, I think, I think the mayor had suggested this, three plants indoor, three plants outdoor. If, if we decide on six plants, it can be three in, three out, correct? Or six out.
You could, you could allow outdoor cultivation if you want.
And then just put our limits on that particular aspect of it, so...
Right, I mean, again, right now, you ban outdoor cultivation and indoor cultivation.
Right, right, but that was for, that was for a good reason, just like, that's an option tonight, that is, if we face a deadline that we cannot reach, then we need to educate ourselves to the point to where, if we make a ban tonight, let's see, if we had to do that, it would only be for a purpose of educating ourselves. Furthermore, because what I'm seeing is cultivation, manufacturing, testing, sales, purchasing, deliveries, cultivation, I mean, consumption, and then you got flour, you got edibles, you got these other things that, there's a lot that we're gonna go over on this, and, and then there's taxation, and then there's policing. We have, you know, numerous things, so I didn't mean to get, get you off that, but we're staying open-minded.
Yeah, and, and one option is, I mean, one or two cities has just banned, has just said, "We're gonna ban everything until we study it further." And that way, they retain the right to allow it. And that way, they retain the right to allow it in the future.
Okay, can we ask for an extension, then? Also, instead of banning it, can we just keep what we have? I mean, it's already banned in this, in this city, but can we ask for an extension, or do we, I mean, banning it seems like, like, it just seems like a brick wall, but, but we have to do it?
You have to do something.
In order to, so the banning would actually give us an extension to come back and reorganize, and then bring back a regulation that we all feel comfortable with?
Again, you could, you could either ban it, and that way, you can just come back and loosen it up in the future, you could put a moratorium on it while you study it.
Understanding the moratorium could cause some, some drawbacks, other words, people can sue us if, for some reason-
Well, last time you put a moratorium, you got sued. But we won that lawsuit, so.
It still cost us money.
Yeah, it cost you a lot.
Yeah, so we don't want that. I'm sorry, Leslie, I'd love to hear, I want to hear you continue.
No, this is a conversation, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to stimulate some kind of thought process, and let you know that-
Okay, thank you.
We're definitely open-minded here, and I want to let you know I'm open-minded on this, I'm trying to come up with something that's good.
So I just, I just wanted to bring up that point, that it seems in the past, personal cultivation has not been a problem in this town. Obviously, you're going to restrict cultivation of acres of marijuana, because there are no acres for marijuana to be grown upon in the city, so that's a moot point. Moving on, the brick and mortar delivery service that was mentioned, would that be in a commercial zone or a residential zone? If you chose to create a provision allowing a delivery service in town, they have to have a brick and mortar, as I understand, is that a brick and mortar on Sumner Avenue in the residential area, or on Sumner Avenue in the commercial area? Just a question, right?
I think you'd have to look to the general plan and see what the general plan, first of all, that would be the first controlling point for the council, since they've adopted it, and would it be in appropriate use for, in a residential area, and that would, but...
Right.
And I think your residential ordinance, you know, you have to look at it, into which area, but it does ban certain commercial uses in the residential areas. And by brick and mortar, it doesn't mean that it's a separate store, you could, you could partner with someone else, you just have to have a physical location in the city.
Okay, so, just checking on that. And then I really feel that, if cultivation hasn't been a problem in this town, that if an owner allows a tenant to rent their property in their agreement, where it already says, you know, no smoking, no cats, you know, no dogs, whatever it says, it's no marijuana cultivation, and let that be between the owner and the tenant. I am the owner of a property, and I choose, and I'm not saying I am, but if I choose to grow marijuana for medical use, it's none of your business. It's my property, and if I get mold, I get mold, and I have to deal with it. But because this has not been a problem in the town in the past, why create a problem? Why create all these regulations? And my privacy and what I do in my home is not your business. It's not your business to regulate what I choose to do in my home, if it is lawful. So, thank you for listening, and I shall have more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm compelled to say something as much as against my own better judgment, and Leslie, I very much am nodding my head, saying, "I agree with you, a homeowner's right is, is something valuable. It's part of why you own a property, so that you can make your own decisions, and you can do what you want with your own property." But not that long ago, we had a situation in town where we had an explosion, and there were affected parties on either sides of those buildings, who were asking the questions, "Why didn't you know about this? Why didn't you do something about it? You have to keep all of us safe." And so, the reason I'm bringing that up is, how, how do I answer that, as, as a leader in our community? How do I answer that question when somebody says, "Why aren't you regulating this? Why aren't you making sure?" We don't know what's going on in this house next to us, and we could have had a very serious situation. I don't know how to answer that.
Well, there are already existing laws against what that person was doing. They were manufacturing, illegally manufacturing a drug, so there are existing laws about that. And that kind of takes me back to where I want to go, because this seems to have gotten very, very confused. What we started with was a state law that two-thirds of the adults in this state approved, which specifically says, "The state will be issuing licenses to allow for commercial, subject to local jurisdictions determining whether or not they're going to allow certain kinds of activity related to commercial activities involving marijuana." But when it comes to personal use, we are currently, as of the date of this enactment of this proposition, it is legal for an adult to possess a certain amount of marijuana, it is legal for a person to grow a certain amount of marijuana, subject to reasonable regulations. And I guarantee you that, there's going to be a lot of litigation as to what a reasonable regulation is, particularly when you have an attorney who has not demonstrated any knowledge about what it takes to grow marijuana, six plants of marijuana, and you're talking mold and fire and this and that. And I have to ask, what's the difference if I grow my tomatoes with my grow light, or I've got a patch of corn in my backyard? At a certain point, you kind of have to dial it back and say, "The only difference here is because it's cannabis." But it's, it's a plant. So I think before you get thrown into all these considerations of fires are starting, and there's, you know, electrical hazards and everything else, it's kind of time to dial it back and really consider what is being, what's being permitted by the people of the state of California, and what the proper role of the city is to play. And the other thing I'm going to say is, this is like some big full employment act at this point, where everybody's saying, "You've got to do something." And the only thing that you have to do is make sure, number one, that your ordinance comports with state law right now, which it doesn't, because you prohibit cultivation, you prohibit personal use, that's not consistent with the law. And if you're worried about the state granting licenses to people come January 1st, then adopt one line that says, "We do not permit commercial cannabis activities in the city of Avalon." And at some later time, after the county who's got a huge staff of people working on this, or the city of LA who has a huge staff of people, or even the city of Long Beach, has experience, that you can call up and say, "Hey, Mayor of Long Beach, how is it working for you? What do you like? What do you don't like?" Then you can draw from their experience and go from there. I don't think there is a big groundswell or push here to have commercial activities. And so, I think, why get yourself all worked up about it? Why don't you just focus on what the law has said, reasonable regulations can be put upon, and consider whether what's being suggested in these pages and pages is really reasonable regulation? Because I don't think it is. I agree with Leslie, that there's a privacy aspect to this that the city should honor.
Thank you.
If I may respond. So, yes, Malkursa allows adults to cultivate indoors for their personal use up to six, up to six plants. However, this is subject to the city's authority and ability to reasonably regulate this use, and, you know, local police power stems from the California Constitution itself, and of course, Malkursa underscores that authority. And I would say that, yes, this is distinct, cultivation of cannabis is distinguishable from the cultivation of tomato plants, because there is no Proposition 64 for tomato plants. The state hasn't, you know, done anything like that, and the state hasn't taken the time to explicitly state that the city can regulate tomato plants. So, you know, it's Proposition 64 and Malkursa that have identified this as an area that the city may focus on if it so chooses, and pass regulations that are tailored to the needs of its community. And for the record, no, I do not cultivate cannabis.
Thank you, Mark.
Are there any other questions?
Rhonda's behind you, there, and it looks like there's other people.
Honorable女士. Anyway, as I sat yesterday downtown with a petition, trying to find out what concerned citizens would like to have happen, not pertaining to this, but to our philosophy of the law, like I said I would, there was actually an incident, which I'm sure nobody knows, because it wasn't turned in, where there was a house broken into, and the people were trying to get the marijuana plants. This was told to me personally, by the person, face to face. Okay, so, and, you know, as we see, the unfortunate thing is that we don't, we're thinking like we think, good Americans, follow the rules, but that's not what everybody does. And in this, I mean, this woman said to me, "I'm terrified now, because I don't know if somebody else is going to come in and break into my house to get my pot plants." And that hasn't been brought, I said, "Did you do anything about it?" Of course you didn't, you know? But it's already happened. It's already happened. And that's very unfortunate, because we have seen the decline in a lot of the states that have already gone on before. There's a lot of statistics now that are coming out, from Colorado, Washington, and Oregon, and unfortunately, once again, we have the cart behind the, you know, or, yeah, it's not, it's not as it should be. So, you know, it's definitely unfortunate, but what we will see is, young people who don't have the capacity to make good decisions, make bad decisions on some of these issues, that they will be seen with their eyes if it's allowed.
There was an interesting comment to that, though. If it was legal and they were breaking into their house, they could have called law enforcement. But since it's against the law right now for them to ban, I mean, to grow, of course, you can't call, you can't call sheriffs, you know?
Good evening. I have a couple opinions on this, and one, I have the Los Angeles County's opinion on the law, and I agree with the lady over here that said, there's basically two concerns, okay? One, starting with the new law, people can grow up to six plants in their residence. One thing, and I'll give this to the council right after I speak, is, they have a, some requirements for your house. You cannot have it within 10 feet of your fence, and the reason for that is, so juveniles don't run up to the house, reach over the fence, pull the plants, and steal them. There is a variety of different things that really seem to make sense for the people that want to grow it legally in their, in their house. And I think, you know, most people are law-abiding, so now that the law has changed, that people can grow up to six plants in their residence, more people will probably do it, instead of going and buying it on a street corner. With the second aspect, and the part that I agree with, is the dispensaries in a commercial area, a building. On Front Street, do we want to have a dispensary out there? And I can tell you from a previous city that I worked in, that dispensaries were illegal. Somebody came in there and opened a dispensary, and we had a robbery there, they tried to get the money out of the business, we had somebody drive a car through the front of the business to try to get all the marijuana after hours, and they even had a security guard in there. So there are problems that come with dispensaries. I admit, it might not be every single one, I can only tell you from my experience and what I saw, and that was an illegal dispensary, not allowed. So my recommendation would be to have some kind of requirement for the residents to keep them growing their six plants safely, and number two, not allowing a dispensary in the city at this point. Like the council said, you could always come back later and change your mind, and say, "Yep, we want a dispensary on Front Street. We'll see what the county did, see what other lawsuits from other cities and so forth," and that would reduce the liability to the city. That's my opinion, and from talking to Sheriff Department experts on marijuana and the new laws. You have any questions?
No, that's good, that, those are very interesting.
Yeah, we could use any, any amount of input we can get, it's very welcome. Rhonda answered a good thing, that would be absolutely part of any implementation of this, would be education, educating not just the kids, but educating, actually have people going up to the school and, and letting the kids know exactly what the laws are, and what the consequences are when you do partake in, in this particular drug, before your brain is actually totally sophisticated and developed. And kids aren't stupid, you can't patronize them, you've got to go at them, and we can educate them and make them smarter for it, and allow them to understand it and know it, and they love information. They're like, you know, they're like little sponges, and any information they can get, they will absorb. Now, some kids are just, they're just drifting, and they get into what they're going to get into, but they need to understand the consequences as well, and that would be our responsibility as well, because of, out of all these things I mentioned, there's enforcement, banking, education, I mean, there's going to be a lot of cash involved in it, or some for that matter, but California, I mean, most people, all they wanted was for the stuff to be decriminalized, period, right? That's it. But unfortunately, California came up with all these things that, that, it's just something that is thrown in our, on our table, in our plate, in our community, in every community in California, and now we've got to deal with it. And I'll tell you, after going to the lead California cities this, this last week, we went to a, a study on marijuana, and it was just one of several, but there were, there were council people from Humboldt there that were totally confused about this. I mean, there's people all up and down the state, that this is getting very confusing, and, and it's getting, the regulations are getting very hard to understand, but as long as we continue to educate ourselves, I think is a good idea, and we can, we can maybe cover every single one of these points, and every one of these little areas that we have here that we're going to have to go through in order to make it safe, and make it responsible for our community, and we're going to do that. We're not going, we're not going to put something in this community that's, that's, that's going to be detrimental to it. We're going to do our best we can, is what I'm saying. So the stimulating conversation is very good, and I'm glad you are all here to participate in it, because it's a really important thing, and I, and I think of all the topics that we've had to deal with in, in the recent past and in the future, this one is going to, it's going to be kind of complicated, but with your help, I think we can, we can get through this and make it beneficial for medicinal marijuana users, for the people that actually want to do it recreationally, we can definitely keep them safe as well, and then the kids, most above all things, the kids and the animals, you know, we've got to keep them safe, especially if there's, the animals I mentioned, if there's some kind of edibles, because that's something that I'm concerned about, because I did talk to the veterinarian, and there have been multiple cases where animals had accidentally consumed this, and it's not a good outcome from that. I mean, it's not a good thing, so.
And let me ask a question, and I'm kind of asking this to the audience. One of the biggest complaints that I get is, "I don't like the smell, it makes me sick," or, "I just don't like it," so, and, and I know there's ways to smoke it and things that doesn't, that don't smell, you know, and I don't know if those are oils, I don't know that much about it, but is there a feel for if we ban, there's no outdoor smoking of cannabis, so that nobody's going to smell it? Would that be a good thing to do? Okay, well, I hear a yes in the background, but yes?
Well, I mean, there's all different ways to do it. Yes, there are ways that you can smoke it, that it doesn't smell. I mean, you can do the same thing in a vape deal, but there's other kinds of things, too. But you can also, if you go to a, a medical doctor that specializes in giving you prescriptions for what is appropriate for you with marijuana use, if it's a medical issue or any other issue, you don't have to smoke it at all.
Right.
You can actually take tinctures or oils that either, that have absolutely none of the effects of making you high, but give you the therapeutic effects that you need, so it isn't necessarily, you don't have to smoke at all, and that the smell isn't, doesn't need to be part of that.
So if that is not an issue, that might be one of the things that I would say, is let's have no outdoor smoking of cannabis, that also, that, so, that it's not in the children's faces as much, and, you know, you smoke it in your house, or you do the alternative, so that it's not, doesn't smell. That's just the first one.
A lot of things smell, though, I mean, there's chimneys that have smoke, it goes, you can smell those. People, neighbors that smoke cigarettes, and they keep their door open, I mean, or their window open, you can smell that.
Oh, I know, but, but, I'm just saying, I get a lot of complaints. Tony Zeiler is another one, he says, you know, he has to close- He says he, you know, he has to close his windows because everybody that walks down the alleys are smoking in the alleys, and they don't like it coming in their home. So I'm taking one for Tony. But anyway, Carl, did you have something?
Legitimate beef there.
Carl, 114 Clarissa, um, wanted to say, I am a medical patient myself. I consume myself, and then, um, I, my associate, also, we actually speak for 109 medical, local medical patients now. And, um, I want to point out, not all 109 have a green thumb. So there is somewhat of a need for providing this need. I am an advocate for medical, not necessarily recreational, and I am here, me and my associate combined have over 20 years' experience in the industry, so I would like to offer any help that we can provide. But I am definitely not for that ordinance where the smoking of tobacco and cannabis are combined in the same thing. Me, as a smoker myself, I do think it should be done privately, in the privacy of your home, not freely done on the street. Over in the rest of California, does that. They, you have to smoke in the privacy of your own home. They don't have an ordinance that allows cannabis smoking on the street. And, um, pretty soon, they're not gonna even allow you to consume it. A lot of people over town smoke on their lunch break or something, they go to their car to smoke. They're, they're not gonna allow you, it's gonna be just like an open container. You're not gonna be able to have it even in the cockpit of the car or whatever. So they...
Right.
But I'm just offering my services. I would like to even meet with the head of Choices and the captain because I think the Choices director of all people speaks to a lot of people, and there's a lot of information that she maybe has misleading. So I would like to offer that out there, but...
Yes, and I know, and that...
I don't know if you guys have questions for me or anything, because I can help answer any.
Well, I know that one of the, you know, the direction I know that Carl's very interested in, and I think he's met with us pretty much all individually, is that, is a delivery, medical delivery service.
And I'm all for no storefront, no walk-up. You, it's delivery only. Yes, you have to have an establishment. As a business license holder, you have to be established, an office space, where you take calls and maybe deliveries come, come from. But it could be a very secure location that is monitored 24/7 by the local police department and everything, so...
Or by your own hired staff?
Um, by our hired staff, along with the local police department.
Security, something like that.
I would have, uh, we would possibly have our own local, we would have our own security on site, and then we would also have the local law enforcement have access to that footage 24/7. So they...
And, and I know, but in the city of Marin, I mean, they have people that do audits to make sure that everything is, you know, is good and that appropriate taxes are being paid and, and all of that, and that they're coming, cannabis is coming from reputable places.
The biggest, the biggest thing I can offer is I do speak for 109 local people in this town that don't want to come out of the light just yet. And this is 109 people that their voices are going unheard, kind of.
And these, and I, and they might be a lot of people that just don't have a green thumb and don't want to cultivate, or don't, or their landlord don't allow it, or whatever.
I'm just spitballing, but I know at least 60% of the, my members don't have a green thumb. I'm just spitballing that, but that's more than half, so.
Yeah.
Anything else for me?
Not right, not right the second.
Thank you for your...
Thank you, Carl.
Input.
Well, any other comments?
The only thing I would say is, I, I, part of what's been discussed, I definitely agree with. I, I would like to separate and have the council discuss the commercial part and the individual residential part, because I, I think we might have some common ground on both of those areas, and that might help us to sort of make some decisions.
But, but my concern also is, okay, if we decide on something that I'd seem like we have kind of a consensus, okay? Then you put together this ordinance, but it doesn't have the fine tuning yet, how does that work?
Okay, so one thing, one option is you could decide, let's say it's the council's direction, that we're going to allow delivery of medical marijuana only, and that you can, you can cultivate it indoors, and we're gonna, you know, allow you to smoke it just indoors and no outdoors. But you want to further develop rules on what you're gonna do with respect to delivery services. You could enact an ordinance that would, that would allow, uh, delivery of medical marijuana, but you could say that, um, the city council is going to approve regulations and a program for that, for that service. And until that program is developed and passed by the city council, that delivery would remain prohibited, so that you've got something on the books, but you dedicate yourself to studying it, and then you can either put a sunset date on it, or you can just, you know, do that so that you're complying with the state law while, while you're developing the ordinance or order the regulations, and you look at what other cities are, are doing. That is one option you could do.
Well, I think the community has spoken loudly about a dispensary, and I, and I think that number might be growing. I don't think that a number, that's a number that's diminishing. So I...
Meaning?
A dispensary.
Mean, mean, no...
A storefront.
Oh, we don't, meaning they don't want a storefront?
No, I do not believe people want a storefront, and I would say absolutely not. And if there's a consensus to that, that could be one thing we could throw out the window right now.
I've had some people reach out to me recently about it, um, but it would not, it would be off the grid kind of, but, um, I've had a group of people reach out to me, though, recently about that, and...
I think our voters spoke it with a 67% turn-down rate, or whatever it was.
66.
66%.
True.
I mean, I, uh, and, and, okay, that's not to say in a year or two, we, if there's a big push, we can say, "Now we want to talk about dispensaries again."
Can, can we do that? Can we re, redraft?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and implement, okay, yeah.
We change laws all the time.
Great, yeah, so I, I, I'm in agreement with that, okay, absolutely.
So if we could occur on that, I think that's a good point.
Absolutely.
Okay. Then, do we want to, we want to tackle the, the personal, or do we want to tackle the delivery service type of, of an affair next?
Either one.
Okay, let's go with the personal.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with the personal.
Okay.
Okay, one of, oh, and then there would be like the big, do we kind of have a consensus on ban out, all outdoor smoking of cannabis?
Of cannabis?
Uh-huh. The, the joint or the pipe?
Oh, the, just the public smoking?
Yeah.
It should be the, yeah, I mean, it's the same as what we have on the books now.
No, no, because now we, no.
Oh, you're saying nowhere, no cannabis smoking in public.
Because if I'm taking my medicine, I'm sorry, I don't take it on the street. I don't walk down Front Street and take medicine, or chew my insulin, or whatever. So why would you want, if, if you're truly using it for medicinal purposes, I don't think you need to be in the middle of town to do that, or walking down an alley when you probably, you should have a home.
Well, it's also that, remember, state law now allows personal consumption of, of marijuana for recreational use.
So why don't...
So that, so that what you could do is you can still say, you, you know, if it's for recreational use, you can't smoke it outdoors. Because it's not just, it's just, it's not just medical.
Medicine, yeah.
And remember, now, state law legalizes the personal use of marijuana up to, I don't know the exact ounces you can have.
Number of grams.
Grams, sorry. Ounces, yeah, that's a lot.
So you're on the side of just banning the smoking of that?
Publicly.
Publicly. Okay, what if there was a designated place for it? This is just a question off...
Well, and we can make, create a designated space at some point.
Certainly.
I mean, okay.
But at least for now...
Like, that way, that, because people are gonna be coming over, you know it, by the droves, and they're gonna be lighting up, and it would be nice to have the sheriffs or any, code enforcement be able to say, "Hey, guys, you can't do that here. If you're gonna do it here, you're gonna be arrested. There's a place right down the street," you know, whatever. I mean, it would not, be nice to have an option, I just don't want to get, push people into a corner that we can't get them out of.
Right, okay, so first of all, if, it would be just an infraction if they did, correct? It wouldn't be any big, if, if they were smoking it in public, would that just be an infraction? Or do we set what it is?
You, well, if, okay, I think right now it's an infraction, but, but, but you can set what it is.
No, so if we want an infraction...
Because you're gonna have a separate regulation for, for marijuana, because if it's gonna be more comprehensive, I'd want a separate section in the marijuana.
Okay, so when the sheriffs go up to them, as they should be doing with dogs and bicycles on Front Street and open container, they could easily say, "You know, we don't allow it on da-da-da-da-da, and here is your warning." One warning. And then if they continue to walk down the street, just like they do with open containers, then at some point, there needs to be more, something a little more strong. But it's just a thought. I mean, because we don't, you know, we're not wanting to bust our, the people who come over, they're not gonna know any different, but they also need to know...
They don't have a hotel room, but they need to medicate. Uh, I, I think just we need an outlet.
Well, I, well, I'm glad this is wintertime. There's not as many people in town. But, but that might give us time to, because I don't have a clue about where they could...
Yeah, I don't either, and we need to buy some time, for sure. And we could, we could tackle what we can tackle tonight, which isn't gonna be much, I'll tell you right now, but not going down the list of, of items I have here. But let's continue, so we're making progress.
And just, you know, right now, your smoking violations of just cigarettes are an infraction.
Okay.
$25 fine.
Okay.
First offense, then it goes to 50, then 100.
That, that is if they do it like what, if it's...
Blatantly.
Outside of in and a loud area. If you smoke outside of, no, in, I'm sorry, if you smoke, if you smoke, for instance, in City Hall, that's a $25 penalty.
Okay.
And the pleasure pair.
Okay. Oh, and the pleasure pair, too? No, no, no smoking?
On the beach and the, many people do it, but...
Okay.
Okay, so we got two things down.
Okay.
We're gonna ban outdoor right for now?
Outdoor smoking?
No, outdoor smoking.
Oh, sure.
Okay, ban all outdoor smoking. What else did we get done?
Cannabis.
Let's talk about residential. I'm, the only reason I'm...
Cultivation? What?
Yes, the cultivation, and thinking about Paula, so many of the people rent here that if we, if everybody had to get a permit to grow and get that permission from the landlord, and they've been living there for 30 years, and that landlord didn't even know they've been growing for the last 30 years, no harm, no foul, in a way. That's a thought.
What, uh, the city attorney's office said, Ms. Hall, in inquiry that was made at one time, um, is that the decision, because of the legalization, that the decision for consumption in a residence is the landlord, that they can make the decision one way or the other.
You mean cultivation or consumption?
No, I hear that, but when they were talking about the permit, and, and the city that had a permit, and then they'd have to get permission from their landlord to be able to do that, I'm, I'm having a problem, I would have a problem with that.
You would, would, may, if I may, if I, if I understand what you're saying is, it's a double permit, in a sense, you're, you have to get a permit from your landlord, and then if you have that permit, but then you still have to get a permit from the city, then do you really have a permit, permission to do anything?
Yeah, it resonates with Pam.
That's a double, a double whammy.
The point Pam was making, it convolutes something that's already, we're trying to, we're trying to define it and, and simplify it.
I would, I would like to say that I confess my ignorance here. I'm not sure what the cultivation of six plants means. I mean, how much electrical does it take? How much water does it take? How much opportunities are for bad things to come out of it? And I don't, I'm, I need to be educated.
A plant, a plant can get up to 10, 12, 16 feet, uh, but considering the confined, and it can be 10 feet wide, really, if you have the lighting, but considering the, the confined spaces that people have, you can, you can monitor them and keep them small, too, I'm sure of that. Um, so you can confine them.
How, how often you would use it. Yeah, that's, that's one way of keeping them small.
Well, well...
I think there might be some, uh, I, and I don't, I don't know this, but certainly, uh, for certain kinds of uses, there might be some building code issues that you'd have to, that, that, that would, that would be informative for us, so there might be some fire code issues, um, that are informative, I don't know. But, um, you, but the point that the mayor pro tem made, um, while not interfering with people's privacy, you want to be sure that if there's intense use of light, that the circuits, that you have the proper circuits, the proper electrical feed, so there's no fire hazard. And, um, maybe you'd want to look at, have us look at what the fire code or what the building code might, might recommend, and just let people know, educate them.
Very, very legit point, because, um, that's how they, in some cities, before this conversation, these conversations came up, that's how they caught people that were manufacturing is, uh, that were cultivating was, they got their electrical bills were just skyrocketed. And so that is definitely a factor because, um, the lighting they use can be pretty intense.
And we just want to be sure that they're safe, that's all. We, and they and their neighbors, yeah.
Ken, okay, I, I just have this feeling with its 21 and older, I don't think a lot of people, I'm not gonna start growing now, you know? I mean, I just don't think there's gonna be a lot of people that say, "Boy, I'm gonna grow." I think the ones that are doing it illegally now, that are taking the chance now, they're, they're doing it. So, so, you know, it's something like to say, "You can have six plants, and you can decide if they're indoor or outdoor," just, just to start the conversation. Because if I had plants, I'm not gonna let my plants get 10 feet tall so that everybody can see them.
Absolutely not.
You know, I, so the people that are cultivating now, I think are doing it probably pretty well. And again, once it's legal, when that person breaks into that house, now they can call the cops. And then they can say, "Okay, that was breaking and entering because they were going after my medicine."
If someone, if somebody...
Or, or my recreational cannabis.
If somebody breaks into your home, um, for whatever intent, their intentions are, that's a pretty stupid thing to do to begin with, because you know what can happen there.
Yeah, yeah.
When somebody threatens the, your life or the life of your family, you're, you're allowed to protect yourself.
I, I think the point, if I'm, if I just may, that I think I, I am aware of, once incidents that's occurred, as was described, maybe it's the same, maybe it's not, I'm not gonna go into details, I, because I don't know all the facts. But, um, your point about being, once, once it is legal, then, once it is legal and you define what is legal, whether inside and outside, or inside and outside, both, that, then you're right. I mean, then they have access to all of the protections that would otherwise citizens would have in the community. Right now, if they're, if they're taking the chance, they're, in a sense, they become victims, uh, of sorts, because they don't feel comfortable calling law enforcement because they're doing something that, uh, right now is, or will soon be legal, but is not legal now.
Okay, I like your, I like your thought on that. Uh, yeah, six in or out?
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out.
I mean, I...
I like six in. I don't like anything out, because most of the units in this town are not, there's no big fences around places.
Well, it has to...
That's why they're not growing now, because it would be stolen.
That's, that's where we...
So that's why it doesn't happen.
That's where we come to the fact that when they're out, now, now that adds more regulations. It's, they have to be so many feet from, from a fence, from the neighbors, from a neighbor's yard, I mean, I, I, that's how regulations are being set up in other cities, correct? I mean, 10 feet from, from, or 12 feet from a neighbor's yard, um, you know, it's, it can't be within so many feet of a school, a library, a, a pub, a public place where kids would be, you know, a, a park, um, you know, 600 feet from a park, a library, a school, um, uh, which we don't have a huge problem with that, but, um...
Again, I, I, I don't, I, again, I, I wouldn't be putting my plants on the side of my house, you know, because they wouldn't be there. And the deer would eat them, I think, is what we discussed last time, when we talked about it. Uh, and we don't want the deer getting high, so...
I think so, I think, um, that to a certain point, um, we have to allow for, for outdoors, for at least a couple plants outdoors.
Because for those people who might not have permission by the, maybe their landlord says, "No, you can't grow it. I don't want you growing inside," but yeah, you can grow outside, and you can, you know, there's a way to water, I don't know how much water they use, but heck, if you, if, if you do the phase three water rationing when it comes to cannabis, you can still get your, because I'm not getting as much water out of my shower as I did when I had to. So if I wanted to get a couple of gallons, I could easily get a couple of gallons every day by taking a shower. So, um, and you've got the island company that's giving free water out there, so, I mean, there's a way to get water.
You can't water, um, anything that you're gonna consume without wa, without water out there. there. Yeah, they don't, it's for landscaping only.
Landscaping is-
I guess we could have the water tested.
That's called electric spinach.
Yeah, but anyway, so I don't know, I, let me just throw it up. I say you can have six plants, wherever you can plant them, indoor or out, and then, that's just what I'm going to start with. And then whatever regulations, and I don't really like them to have to get a permit from us. Is there a way, though, like if Edison all of a sudden saw increased utility bills, they could alert us, if something looked like it was getting out of whack?
Generally speaking, use records are not considered public records.
According to this.
Well-
No, according to this.
Now, the landlord might pop up-
Divisual use records.
Right.
Like, I don't think you have, anybody has any business knowing how much my utility bills are, or how much I assume.
What usually happens is the police department gets a search warrant, and then they, they go to the electric, and they can get a copy of the record.
Let me just say, as someone who ran it, utilities, five cities, that I would agree that for electrical, that because, A, they are a private company, as opposed to a public entity, and in an opinion that I, that we had several years ago with regard to water use, because we were building a swimming pool in a drought, and they got, they were able to get the records of all of the, all of the utility users in our neighborhood to compare uses, so, but, but it may be the interpretation of different legal counsel.
Right.
So, but, but your point was, I think, if, if there was overuse, could Edison, might Edison on its own alert and say, hey, there seems to be a high use here, higher than maybe what the, and certainly they could do-
If the person's paying for the water, what the heck, and we're not in a drought?
But the lighting thing can be a fire danger, and if somebody just takes an entire home, and decides, well, they're going to fudge on our, our law, and say, I'll just, we're just going to put plants in the whole house, that, that could be a problem.
Well, number one, they can only have six.
Right.
And then, but if we could decide on a number, if a number is even what y'all want to decide, and then kind of fine tune that other stuff?
I, I think maybe what, a good way, and efficient way to do this, at least for tonight, is you tell us whether you want to allow indoor and outdoor, or, or just indoor, and then we can come back to you with a draft ordinance that would have a potpourri and a, a list of regulations that you could do, and you could just cross them all out. And, and then you could just say, we're not going to regulate it at all, or, or we can do it tonight.
No, but I mean, why didn't you present that to us tonight?
We gave you-
What kind of?
It wasn't a smorgasbord.
Because, because the previous direction, the discussion of the council last time, was that you were going to, that the consensus appeared to be, you were only going to allow medical delivery, but we gave you other examples.
What I have so far is that you have no cannabis smoking in public. You allow, you would allow residential cultivation, and the question is, would it be indoor and outdoor, or out, or just one, or both?
Both.
So, so that's, those are two things that we have.
And I'm indoor.
And you're, and Mr. Olson's indoor.
I'm concerned now, because we have this, we have more assets working on this now. We need to, we need to come up with some way to generate money out of this, somehow, if we're getting, I think we're going to get to that, right? That point, we need to generate money so we can pay for staff to be able to, and our attorneys to be able to research this, for sure.
It doesn't come out of this, though.
The issue is, we can, once there's a regulatory, once you decide what, what you want to do, we can, as part of your annual fee, establish fees for the inspection or the enforcement of any rules that you have, as part of, if you are requiring people to get permits, or inspections.
Oh, I see.
If you are not requiring people to get permits, or to go through some permitting process, then that's a whole, that's really a tax, and then that goes to the voters. Generally speaking, it will be a tax measure that the voters of Avalon will have to establish. Now, you know, you can-
Let me throw something ugly out. Not ugly.
I'll leave.
So let's say, let's say the conservancy said, because they're in the county, they said, we will allow someone to do some hydroponic stuff and grow, and then some else in the county, they say, and this little guy, you can have a little testing facility out there at Middle Ranch, and then the county, and then the conservancy says, and you can package it out there, too, right?
Except that the county doesn't allow that right now.
County's not allowing anything?
Nope, nope. The county's only allowing, it bans all cultivation of medical and non-medical cannabis in unincorporated areas of the county, period. They do, and the county sets reasonable regulations for personal cultivation of indoor cannabis. So, so the county's not going to allow the conservancy to do it.
Okay, okay. Dan?
Can I just correct that? The county has a ban that they put in place prior to the adoption of processes work, because they're concerned, and they're actually coming out with regulations in December, because they hope to advance of the state's term.
Actually, this ordinance was passed two months ago.
Oh, so they may be looking again?
Yeah, we went back, they banned everything, but they are working on it, essentially.
Kind of like we're talking, okay. And Carl, behind you there, Mark?
I just wanted to make my own personal opinion on this. I think commercial would be best, like indoor, obviously for residential, but going outdoor, you're allowing pesticides, you're limiting the seasons of growing, you're limiting the quality of the medicine that people are getting, and the state is actually leaning towards testing everything to be pesticide-free, and everything being outdoor, you can't grow it without pesticides, without incesticide.
No, I, I, yeah.
But you don't have to, in a contained, in a, in a commercial environment where you've got ventilation and it's completely sealed off from the outside world, you do control the temperature of the room, how long the lights are on, all that stuff, you are controlling the atmosphere more, where you don't even have to, you can use organic soil, you don't have to use a soil that has all these chemicals in it.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, however, I also believe that if I want to put-
You don't have to use soil at all.
But if I wanted to put something to keep the little grasshoppers off, I can do, I could do that, and so I, and, and we, I don't know, we have a lot of sun, and we take advantage of-
Yeah, commercial-
Oh, no, we're not talking about commercial.
We're not.
No, the six plants for personal should, they should still be there, but for the commercial use and stuff, there should be a commercial facility growing it, because just like liquor, my family's here because we've been in the liquor business, but you got manufacturers, you got distributors, you got retail people that serve the end consumer. By having a cultivation facility here, and then giving that to a designated retail that has outlets for it, you are making sure that the right people are getting it, and the wrong people-
We can, we can do that, but I, I think we're talking about residential right now, right?
No, and I think what you're saying, if someone wanted to grow, let's say you have a delivery service, and somebody in Avalon wanted to grow plants to sell to you, that they could do it, and that should be regulated, and you're saying that should just be indoors, and that-
No, if it's personal use, if you want to consume all these pesticides and stuff, great, but also, I'm concerned that Johnny Appleseed's going to go around and throw a bunch of seeds all over the island, too, if you'd allow outdoor and you don't regulate it reasonably.
Yeah.
So-
Okay. Keep going, Paul, stop, stop.
I gotta get up.
Paula, come to the mic.
Gotta get up to the microphone.
So, I'm going to say, I have never grown a plant, ever, because, but I, you know, I, you guys know, I lived in Mendocino County for thirty years, and I, this was in my life all the time, every day, Almond, the sheriff of Mendocino County, I mean, I had to go to fifty million things all about all of this stuff. So, first of all, when you commercial grow, or even when you grow for yourself, you, you don't want, you never go plant a seed, because you only get beneficial marijuana of things from female plants that bud, so those are only the female plants. So you don't go for seeds, you go to stores and you buy what's called a clone.
Right.
And the clone is a little plant that is absolutely a female plant. So, I mean, that, the idea of people throwing seeds around town, or out in the woods, or something like that, I mean, that's, you know, fifty percent that it's going to be a male plant. So, I don't think so, but I just think if, if, if the law says that as an adult, we can grow six plants in our home, whether it's indoor or outdoor, is, should be a personal decision, but that, anyway, that was just lesson 101 on cultivation.
What, what, so, I'm afraid I got off track a little bit with Carl, I mean, are we discussing the commercial aspect of this right now?
He brought that up just now, when he brought, pulled that in.
I think it's a good point, but are, is that part of the decision we're making right now, because that's a whole nother subject?
Right.
That I want to go, I want to kind of categorize this, yeah.
We haven't got there yet.
Categorize this, because you're getting into chemistry there, and testing, chemistry, I mean, you can't, you're not just going to get some, some guy down the corner that has a bunch of plants and buy them from him, and then sell those to people. I'm sorry, that doesn't work that way, it's got to, they got to be tested, you got to know-
Right.
The quality, the quantity of THC, and-
Right.
And, and-
No, that's, that's heavy.
Yeah, that gets, that gets pretty intricate there, so.
Um, one of the, speaking of the outdoor cultivation, and I honestly don't know, so I'm looking for someone else, or hopefully many people, to answer this question, there is apparently a pretty strong odor when you're growing the plants. And so, several people had mentioned to me, you know, if you're going to allow for personal use, and you're going to allow for outdoor, outdoor growing, how does that affect the neighbors in our small community where houses are right next to each other? Does that, is there such a smell that impedes the, you know, the comfort of the people living in such close quarters?
Well, I know it is very pungent.
I know it when you smell it when you're walking around, but, but is that the same as when you're growing it?
Yes, it does, it absolutely does, so, but-
There's a gentleman in-
So, originally from Pennsylvania, and over there, it's not legalized yet, even for medicinal use, but they already started, and they were approved for just hemp plants, kind of the male version that she was talking about. So you can also grow outdoors that way, but for producing, you know, material for, especially art over here, or clothing, or whatnot. But another thing I was going to say was, that I was actually surprised that there's a plethora of rosemary bushes out here, and that actually disguises the scent, but it doesn't, I mean, it's, it is pretty big and bushy, but some people also grow with mint, you know, and, you know, mint grows like a weed, so it grows pretty fast, but, you know, if somebody finds it offensive, I think maybe they should, you know, work, work with the people, and, you know, just kind of like what you guys are doing with the citizens, just working with everyone and making sure every, everything's cohesive.
Yeah.
But, that was my-
That was interesting, thank you.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That was good input.
So now they're smoking rope, then? If they're smoking the male plants, they're smoking rope?
Coexisting.
I think that's part of the new law, too, is that cultivation of hemp, it will be legal. And just to answer your question about the odor, so, the time the odor comes is during harvest, and that's when the plant is harvested and dried, and then, you know, I would have to call parents and tell them that, pick up their kids, because their kids smelled like pot, because they were helping trim. So, the thing about it is, is that six plants is not going to do it. I mean, if you live next door to someone who is growing six healthy plants, and it was ten feet from the fence, and it was outdoors, I, I don't think it's going to be an issue. But when you have five hundred, or a hundred, even a hundred plants, I lived across the street from a grow, and every once in a while come the time, I would go, wow, smells like skunks out here, and that's, because that's what it is. So, but I don't think with six plants, that it's a big deal, but it does, it does, it's, you know, smells like skunks.
So people in television land, if they're hearing us, and if they do find out, and anybody can say, yeah, they are growing next door, and it's really stinky, then let us know if that's a, if that's an issue, yeah.
Well, that was one of the, the notes that I wrote down, that was significant, is the number of people who said, don't allow outdoor cultivation. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, you know, in how I participate in the decision-making process, to make sure I'm answering this question for others.
Interesting, okay. It, you like, resonate, Paula has pretty much right on. So when you get a lot of plants, it's, you know, it, it, I don't, I wouldn't consider it offensive, but I would say it's, you can smell, like you can smell night-blooming jasmine, and like this gentleman mentioned, you know, the first person's fireplace down the street, and, you know, some rosemary, and things like that, so I don't think it's an issue, right, at this point.
Okay, and let me ask a question. Were we just given an hour to this, or we were going to go until we were done with this?
You can't go until midnight, you just have other items on the agenda.
Well, I told the council, I told-
You just have other items on the agenda.
I was optimistic we weren't going to go long, but, but we shall see.
Mark has a room, so, he's staying overnight.
We also, there's only a certain number of hours that you're making effective decisions.
And, and we could always, again, we could always come back for another study session.
We're going to have to do that, there's no doubt in my mind, because we've gone through like, two items on this list of like, twelve, and there's no doubt, so how long-
And they'll do the fine, they'll do the fine tuning for us, though, but let me, let me, let me just get a feel-
Yeah, okay.
Okay, because, okay, we're looking at, maybe six, we're maybe looking at six plants, right? And they're going to come back, Cindy, are you good for six, but you're just not sure about the in and out?
Yeah, I'm just not sure on the in and out.
It's just that I don't think some people might, some people's houses are really, 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 really small, you know, two and three families living in a little house, and, and if they might have a little patio all the way up Metropole, I mean, I'm thinking, if that's the only place they can grow it, because there are twelve people in the house, but, so I think size is an issue, but if-
I was going to say, not everyone's going to grow all six. I'd prefer one or two for myself, and that's it.
Yeah, exactly. No, I, I totally agree.
Okay.
I agree personally. But, okay, so then, so let's go, go six, and we can, then we can, we can vote on the in and outdoor next time, right? And then let's go to the delivery. Okay, so I think we got enough on the first one, right? On the recreational and medicinal, no?
Well, no, it's going to be-
Personal is done.
It's going to be six. You have to be six indoors, the question is indoors, outdoors, and what regulations, if any, you want to put on.
Okay, okay, so let's talk about the delivery service. I will open it up, but I like the, I like the delivery service. I don't like that the people that need to get medicinal marijuana have to feel like they're breaking the law. Now whoever the delivery services, if they're breaking the law to get it here, that's not my problem. So, I don't mind a delivery service, and, and the city of Gustine that was in here, had a pretty good one. I was happy with, with what they were saying to do, you only deliver to a home, now, there, but it is interesting, and I know that when Carl talked about it, he's, you have to have legit, you're not, he's not selling recreational cannabis, it's only medical cannabis, and I agree with that. Now this one city has that, and this would be debatable, is that you have to have your authorization from somebody like the Department of Public Health, maybe we could designate this hospital here, so, and this is where I struggle with the people that can just go over and buy, get their card online, and they're really not medically whatever, do, because they can still grow their own and get it that way, so, and they can still go to a collective over town, and they can still do all of that, do we want to limit ours to truly people that truly, truly, truly have medical uses? I don't know. Because that's just what one city did, but I don't know, and, you know, when somebody, when you talked about cannabis before, one person came up, I think one person in this town has the state card, or whatever they call it. So I kind of am looking for input from y'all on, do we really tighten it up so that you, you know, you have glaucoma, you have cancer, you have blah, 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 or is it, I go over town and I get a card, and then, then I can have it delivered?
But we're not doing it.
What?
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley, so people that have a medical card, that's their business, right? Who are we to judge for what reason? Maybe they have cancer, maybe they have anxiety.
Okay, good.
Right?
Yes, yes.
So it can be, maybe they're autistic.
Right.
Who are we to judge their reason? What are you going to do, have them bring their doctor's report? I mean, if they have a legal medical card, they have a legal medical card.
I, I totally understand that, but when I got a card a few years ago, it was amazing how easy it was to get that card, and the guy says, do you have any medical records here? And I said, no. He listened to my heart, listened to my lungs- He listened to my heart, listened to my lungs, and he gave me a card. Because I just wanted to see how easy it was to get the card, you know? So that's, that's where it's, and that's what I think has turned some of the people off that they are so easy to get when, you know, at such an early age that, so.
But it's not the city's job to regulate them, is what I'm trying to say.
I, I hear that.
And I understand that you're talking about delivery and you're saying you only want it for medical users.
Right.
So does that mean you're going to require a permit for that medical user to receive a delivery in this town?
I don't believe that, I don't believe that's how the system would go.
No, I don't think it's your business.
The guy who's delivering it needs to make sure that they're legal.
That's his business.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I might add to that. It was Monday that Governor Brown signed AB 133 and that amends some of the provisions of Mel Kursa that relate to delivery services in particular, and it is a requirement that delivery services confirm that, for medical uses, confirm that the recipient have, um, a doctor's recommendation or an ID card of some sort. So they would, they would handle that and of course they also need a, um, it could be an electronic or a physical manifest, but a delivery report saying, I'm going to 1234 Front Street with this amount for this person.
Right. No, good, yeah. So I, then, then the question would be if we decided we wanted to look at the delivery system, delivery service, do we, how many do we allow? You know, that'll be an issue, that'll be a discussion. And then if, and if we say, well, we'll allow one or we'll allow two, then how do we decide who gets it? So that's all that work that still will need to be done. Um, you know, is there, is there some favorability by the audience and/or the people up here for us to even research the delivery that, that seems like an option the city might want to?
Well, I think we ought to absolutely have a delivery system. It's the most private way to do it and, um, it's, it, yeah, and it's, and it's the product that is probably cost-effective and it's been tested. It's, it's been, chemistry's been, work has been done on it, so it's been grown, it's been put through, um, like a laboratory to where you know the strength of it when you get it. You can order it with certain different strengths, um, um, and you can get the different types you want, the ones that allow you to either treat a headache or like Leslie said, um, whatever ailments you might have. So it's, it's absolutely the best method.
And one wrinkle for Avalon is that it has to be in a commercial vehicle. So it can't be in a personal vehicle. So someone can't, someone can't use their personal golf cart for it. Has to be, you have to have a, under the state law, you have to have a commercial vehicle permit.
You can't walk it?
No.
You can't walk it to anybody?
Can't bicycle it.
Okay, well then, okay, so that's when we really have, if that is the case, then we really have to look at our vehicle code because the commercial list is 30 years long.
Well, you can have a commercial autoet.
Okay, but what about, what are those, a scent? Oh, well, there's a list for those. I don't think.
What about a bicycle?
No.
Yeah, you just have to go before the hearing officer.
Because if it's a necessity?
Yeah.
Okay, but no good, thanks for throwing that out.
What about a bicycle? Electric bike? No?
No.
We can't change the ordinance to do that?
State law.
No, that's not allowed.
They don't think about Catalina every time they make a law.
Well, it's kind of a waste of resources because we, we don't necessarily need, um, somebody to have a vehicle for that, but I mean, a full-size vehicle, but.
So I haven't heard anything from the mayor pro temp about the deliveries.
I have no problem researching that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we're good.
No problem and on the delivery, looking, so, okay.
But I, I guess I'm, 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 I'm trying to understand what you mean by researching it because we, we, we want to come back, we want to come back with a draft ordinance or another study session.
You brought up a point that it needs to be a commercial vehicle. Is it a commercial autoet? Is it a commercial, does it have to be a walkable car?
Okay.
I don't know.
So you, you put that in your report?
I'd rather, I'd rather it not be a full-size vehicle.
Right, no, no, no.
We have a problem with that in this town.
Full-size vehicle, has to be a commercial vehicle.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if we can, if we can avoid getting a big old, another vehicle in this town, let's do it.
Well, they're not going to be hauling bales. I don't believe.
What I'm saying is, uh, the problem is this, parking, Annie, I mean, you want, you wonder why I drive around this little golf cart and, and it got things piled a mile high because it's, there's nowhere to park, you know? That's the problem is it's going to be congestion all over the streets and if you're going from one, if you're making 20 stops and everywhere you go, it's going to be congested. That's why it almost is, is a, a bad thing to have that ordinance to where you got to have a commercial vehicle because it's going to be burning up parking places and getting putting more traffic on the streets that we don't need when someone could just be doing this, walking around.
Okay, and I have one other thing to add to that. When you talk about delivery to residential, what if I'm in a hotel? Is that considered a resident? If I, if I'm a visitor and I have my card and I hook up and then can they deliver to the hotel and I can smoke it in the hotel?
Most hotels.
You can't smoke in the hotels in town.
It doesn't matter.
But there'd be other, but then like there would be some other product, like we could ban edibles, correct? We could say we don't want edibles, but we want the tinctures or they could get the other stuff or they could get the, okay, just a thought.
In response to your question, Mayor, about whether a delivery service can stop at a hotel, I've only seen language pertaining to private residence. So I'll, I'll look into the hotel question, um, because the, the private residence language has been used to contrast it with, um, public buildings such as City Hall. For example, I, I can't use an app to order some cannabis to be delivered here. So I think that was, that's the concern.
Yeah, so, okay, that's, yes, okay. Oh, go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle Bray, 348 Catalina Street. I just couldn't sit in the audience and not say something. I want to be the voice of conservatism. I want to be the voice of the other hundreds of parents that didn't have the nerve to come down here tonight to say something. Yes, we want it regulated. You shouldn't feel shamed into wanting to find out why people want medical marijuana cards or what they're doing. I think absolutely, I think the less that we can have of this stuff on the street, absolutely. My kids, all the time when we go to other states, we talk about it all the time. We're like, smell that? Nope, you don't smell that. In Avalon, I live in two different houses right now, I smell it all the time. It's here, it's, it's out of control and not everybody is for it. So I want to throw my voice in the pot that us and parents all over this city are not for it. So regulate it, regulate it, regulate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So simultaneously, I think we got to, I'm going to keep adding this, this education thing because we got to have somebody come over and, and help us educate the kids and put them in the right track on this whole thing because if, if the culture is changing in this town overnight like this, then we need to have somebody come in here and if we have to pay them, we got to do it. It's just something else that we're going to, it's going to, it's going to be a tax on the back of, of the people of Avalon for this, um, and implementing this. So I, and I'm, and I'm serious because the schools, we need to ask the permission to go into the schools to, to speak to kids from professionals that actually know how to, how to, how to put on some kind of a presentation to children and allow them to know what the consequences are of what they're doing, what the laws are, and, and have some, have a doctor come in and say, this is, you know, this is literally your brain and, and this is what it's going to be if you do this. And we don't want them doing this until, unless they're sick or something, I'm like, you know, unless they're dying or something and their parents are okay with it, but in other words, I, I don't, I, I don't want kids doing it. I wouldn't want my son doing it. Luckily he does, he's not interested in it. Thank goodness.
Mayor, I, I have seen successful programs in a, in a most, in a, in, in another place that, I won't mention the name, up north, where, where there are a program that goes into the school, it's in cooperation with the school where they do education and they do a whole day of kind of conversation and, and.
Well, can we please get this going simultaneously as we adopt this ordinance and find, I know there's some people in town that are actually interested in doing this too, and it's, one of them is, is a, is a medical doctor, so he's interested in it.
One more comment.
That it is mandated now that children get information, starting in sixth grade, about all the different kinds of drugs and so, they should all be getting that now in, in the school. It, it is allowed, it should be a separate program. I totally agree with you, Joe. It should be absolutely taught from sixth grade forward about the harms, the consequences, every kind of drug that's possible to be had, all the drugs that are on the street. I mean, not in sixth grade, but you know, in a consecutive manner that's, goes with the responsibility and the age of, in, in our school here, because I was looking at this, it, it, what it is, is it's folded into science. We don't have separate health classes for our kids and it is a problem. That's a problem when you're not talking about all the things that kids face as young people in the schools because it's the only place you have a captive audience for them.
Right, exactly. Well, and I did, well, I did, did learn that if you, if you're just doing a delivery service, I don't believe we're eligible for grant monies for different things unless you have cultivation, if you do everything in your community. However, though, if, if you make, if through the taxes or whatever, then you create and whatever you generate, then you can use that because there's also a sunset on that grant money as well, so.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to let Joe know that myself and Rhonda and a few others, volunteers, we teach a drug and alcohol prevention program at school K through sixth grade and it's very comprehensive. It's over an eight-week period of time. It's not the one hour or one day health class. And that's why we fight, that's, I'm just going to say it, like, why do we want to unleash this stuff on our public when, when the very few of us are like scrambling, trying to teach these kids that this isn't what they want to do? Like it almost literally makes no sense for the 1% of people that need it medically. It makes our jobs a lot harder.
Understand, regardless of whether we want to do it or not, it's here and it's coming, it's coming to town and, uh, whether, even if we ban it, it's still going to be here and we're going to have the problems from it and we're going to just pretend like it's not here and, and we, at least we can, we can deal with it this way and we can somehow monitor it and, and have some laws that we can change and we can adapt to what, what is going to be going on. So we'll be listening to you.
But you welcome it into the community, like by having a designated smoking area, you know, downtown, hey kids, we can't even go around that because that's where the kid, that's where the people are that are smoking marijuana. It becomes like, totally like on a psychological level, it becomes mainstay, like Normalville, USA. Do you know what I mean by that? Like it becomes very commonplace, like it's ordinary, like, hey, let's go buy a stamp, let's go get a joint.
It's banned here, it's banned here and it's already normal, commonplace. It's everywhere. Everybody has said it's up and down the alleys, we can smell it, we can see it.
Yeah, but it's gotten, it has gotten exponentially.
Right.
10 times worse.
And it's, and it's banned, it's totally banned here, so it's not, no matter what, if we banned it again, it would still be here. We're trying to, to come up with something for the 20% of people or so that are actually legitimate medical marijuana users and then trying to face the fact that recreational marijuana is here and, um, we're trying to adapt our community into that and, and that's why I'm, education is important to me. Kids are important to me. I don't want kids to, I want kids to understand what this is going to do to them if, and, and this is the main drug that, you know, it seems, seems, um, acceptable, um, within generations of kids, even young kids that, that do it. And I hear about it and it bothers me. And if we can implement a program to them now and allow, a program on steroids, that we, we bring some doctors and like I said, I, we appreciate the effort you guys are doing and I really do because it's helping the community and a lot of kids. And that is one of the main reasons our, our community is still intact and we can boast it. Our community is going in the right direction because of what somebody like you's doing, what the teen center's doing, what our recreation department's doing. And, um, I think we, we, as we continue this dialogue, we need to continue the education and, and, and up, and upgrade it actually, like get some doctors in here, get some people who are certified to do these talks and really get the attention, have an assembly at school and then, you know, have, uh, whatever it is, uh, banned.
We have all that, we have red ribbon, we have doctors that are knowledgeable, these programs that you guys actually just funded.
Right.
Purchased a new drug and alcohol prevention program. It, these are written, these are scientific books, you know, they're very well-written. I actually picked out this program in particular. It's excellent. If you ever want to have a copy, I'd be happy to.
Love to, I'd love to have a copy.
I will just say this as my closing statement. If you guys care about the kids, fight this. You have it in your hands to fight this. The more that we accept it and normalize it, the more that we slowly start to tick away and destroy this community. Marijuana does not strengthen people. It absolutely brings them down. That's my closing statement.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to end the discussion for today. There will be some stuff coming back by the next meeting, next meeting?
Yes, exactly. Do you want to set some sample, a sample ordinance or do you want just further discussion? Continuance of?
I think we should go with some sample ordinances because number one, the community will be able to see them. They'll be able to then talk, talk about the sample ordinances. Unless you think we have time, you're the one keeping, we're in a hurry.
I've got one important question. Can I put it on the table for Scott? I'm sorry to interrupt you. What is the feds going to say about this? I mean, with us having this discussion and, and implementing this into our community, knowing that it's illegal to transport it over the ocean, are we going to be on the line at all? Which is the question you asked at the League of California Cities. And, um, seriously, can we, we, we going to have problems? Are we going to have feedback from this from the federal government because of what we're doing tonight?
Avalon itself is no different than every, every other city in California with respect to marijuana. It is, the federal law prohibits it, state law allows it, federal law is not, the federal government even with a Republican Congress and a Republican president is not going after cities and states that allow marijuana.
Thank you. So, so we're going to continue on, um, the rest of these items?
So we, so we want ordinances by next time or do you want to?
So, and, and again, the timing is right now, is we want to have an ordinance, it would be my preference to have an ordinance in effect adopted, the second meeting in November is your absolute, you know, deadline. But you, as we've done through before, sometimes we have a first reading and then it changes and stuff. So, you know, we've got, you know, I, we can bring back, back a draft ordinance, which I think we're at allowing the commercial delivery of medical marijuana.
And no public.
No public smoking. And cultivation is six plants, but its question is indoor, outdoor and what regulations do you want to put?
And I think that might just be whatever the vote is. I think we can't forget that.
We can give you options. We'll, we'll, we'll have options because it'll probably end up being a discussion and then we'll probably end up doing the official first reading in November. But do you want me to, do you want to have it noticed as a study session on a draft ordinance? Why don't we be, because that, that, that still gives you time to get it in, in, in place before, um, the law. Okay, we'll do that.
And Joe has a lot more questions, so I, I don't, I know that we need to break to do an Edison presentation, but we need to at least, even if you can just list out your questions so that we can, or, I mean, after the Edison presentation.
Yeah, okay.
And he, and, okay, and, and they know because they, the tech, because you're, they're going to have to come back with us with examples of what would the tech, if it was a, if it was a delivery system, what would the taxation be? How would we, I mean, there's all this fine, fine tuning stuff that's, that's kind of out there.
Right, and again, taxes, tax is something different than fees.
I mean, whatever they be, that's just it. That, whatever they be, need to be.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark? Thank you, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Tran.
Okay, Edison, how we doing?
You guys got to catch a boat tonight?
My colleague does. Thank you very much for indulging us.
We'll get you there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just want to introduce my colleague, Damon Hanneman, who is the senior account director for the city. He's been working very closely with your staff members on a lot of energy efficiency programs, and he's here to talk about one of our programs as well for the commercial accounts.
Oh, thank you.
So, thank you, council, Madam Mayor. So, I've been working behind the scenes with some of the city's staff on this effort. I have a lot of other cities, too, the city of Long Beach, the whole West Bay, South Bay side. And I work with the municipal accounts. But what we've done recently is, we've done... We've opened up a program to the municipal accounts, and that started the conversation with Jordan Monroe here about opening up this program that has been here in 2011 to the city's accounts, but also to all the local businesses. So, the program's called the Direct Install Program, and basically, it's for non-residential customers that are kind of in a bandwidth of 0 to 100 KW in demand, so which is going to be about 250, 350 accounts on the island. In 2011, we had about 227... I think that's the actual number. 227 businesses participate. And what the program does is, it comes in at no charge to the customer, will come in and replace retrofit, lighting measures from... I assume this facility might even have taken that opportunity, but it went from incandescent to fluorescent in 2011. Now, we're going fluorescent to LEDs. So, we're going to bring the program out here, and the other measures that might apply are, and we're not sure how big of an opportunity this is, is commercial variable speed drives for pool pumps. So, that might... It's got to be for commercial, like, for if you got a pool or a hot tub or something at a commercial facility, it would qualify. But also, there's some refrigeration measures, too. So, for some of the restaurants, walk-in coolers can receive free auto closers for their freezers and coolers, and they can receive insulation for their refrigeration system and so on. So, a company that actually that's going to come out here, we're going to contract with, is a company called FESS. We have four contractors, but FESS has this territory essentially underneath our program. So, they're going to come out at the end of September, beginning of October, in that timeframe, and do audits. So, they're going to take that list of 227 customers that participated before in the past, and another list of customers that we think might qualify, do some marketing, and start knocking on doors and doing walkthrough audits of the facility. So, they'll walk through, count lights, look at opportunities, take track of what, you know, what opportunities are for each site, and then, you know, work with the customers on maybe potentially best times that they can come back. After they do the audits, they'll be coming back about two to three weeks later with the equipment to do the installs. So, we're trying to time this. We've been behind the scenes now for almost six or seven months, but we wanted to wait till after the summer months in order to have the program come out here. So, they're going to probably take about two to three weeks to do all the installs. They do relatively fast. We're going to work with the customers to make sure that we're not impacting their front-end business, so we'll be working with them on probably the back-office operations or whatever the customer needs to make sure, you know, the business is moving forward. The... Basically, this slide goes over what I just said, and we'll just be working with the customers to make sure that they're getting a good solution. I mentioned it before, these are free services, so we're trying to get these programs out to the island. It's hard sometimes, but the last time we came out here was a success, and I'm sure some of you who are business owners probably even remember that time when we came out here. So, we're looking to duplicate that effort again.
That sounds great. Okay, questions?
I just wanted to mention that we had a meeting with Jim with the chamber, and he's going to help us with our outreach efforts. But, you know, as Damon mentioned, this is a free program. It'll also benefit the commercial customers, and we want to encourage, you know, those who are eligible to participate, because it will really benefit them. So, and we also welcome working with the city to market and let the eligible customers know as well, too.
Once again, what's the date and who's eligible?
So, non-residential, so commercial customers that have a demand of less than 200 KW. So, if they were looking at their bill, it would say something similar to GS2 time of use. If they're a GS2 time-of-use customer or a GS1 time-of-use customer, they would be eligible. And we're going to try to take care of the whole island.
And when is it?
We're looking for some efforts from...
When?
Go ahead.
What day?
So, the plan is, the last week of September, they'll be coming out here to do the audits. It'll take them about two weeks to do those audits, and they'll come back immediately after to do the install. So, we're looking to be done by the end of October with the installations. It's going to be fast.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Announcements and written communications?
Annie, I have our mayor. I received several communications. One of them was on item number 11 this evening, and the other one was regarding last council meetings item on the Casino Dock Cafe, for the record.
Okay, thank you. City manager report?
I have two items, Mayor, just quickly. We did receive a message from the County of Los Angeles today, an alert actually from the Office of Emergency Services, that they have declared a local outbreak of hepatitis A, and public health is working with communities to do outreach, education. And they're requesting all... We're requesting your assistance with supporting safe sanitation in your city. A critical method of preventing disease spread is having sufficient public access to restrooms and hand washing stations, particularly for people who are homeless. Prompt attention to city sanitation is necessary. People can call the Department of Health at 877-777-5799. Also, I wanted to mention, as the Captain Hawking mentioned before, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is recruiting of people to work for the department. They're now hiring... We will have information at City Hall. We'll put it in the library also with their station for... They're called deputy sheriff trainees. It's a well-paid position. They're encouraging island Avalon residents and island residents to... Who are interested to apply, and we have that information and also the Sheriff's Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And we have a city attorney report?
Yes. In response to last meeting's direction led by Councilmember Sampson and concurred by the rest of the council, we did press the island company for information regarding the casino dock area and property ownership. We had a meeting with them today. They've exchanged... Given us some legal documents back from the 1940s, and so I'm going to have my title attorneys look at this to determine if this provides any daylight on whether the island company owns that property or not, and we'll report back to you at the next meeting.
So, is there... Did you get a deed or...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've got...
Wouldn't that be something that you would get in 1927 when they started the demolition?
No, it's after that. This was something that was done. It wouldn't matter what happened in '27. This is legal documents from...
So, what if somebody can just come out here and blow up a mountain and push it out there into the ocean and then make their own peninsula out here? And then, what? We just... The residents just... What? We wait until...
The city council decided in the 1940s. From these documents, and again, I have to verify them, I have to look at...
How did they get the high-tideland from the state of California? It was my question. And so, obviously, we didn't get the documents that we had. Who's going to vet these concerns? What I want to do now is have a resolution drafted tonight with the city council's approval, and we go to the Attorney General's office, and we go to the Public Utilities Commission, and we go to the State Lands Commission, and we figure out... We demand an answer to this, because this is just going on. This is just blowing... Someone blowing smoke at us.
Again, what these documents are, is they're a court order confirming that where the mean high-tideline is and whose property ownership. There's also a reference here to some state legislation, so we need to look at the state legislation. I just got this today.
I say we go to the federal government, then. That's what we do, because the state, you know, they can be... They can obviously be persuaded in some way, shape, or form. We need someone to regulate between the state and the city, and someone to manage this a little better, because I'm not getting the answers I need. We need a title or a deed or a notice of transfer, and I don't think that's it. I mean, the place... Sugarloaf was blown up in 1928, '27. Is it... Are you really allowed to just blow up a mountain in 19... And then not get any approval from any state regulatory system for 20 years? Really? Or 30 years, 10 years? This is the immaculate conception. I mean, come on.
What I think we ought to do is allow them to do their little... Their study and research on that, see what comes out.
We don't have the time. We have an RFP that's due in a couple of weeks. We need to know how... What the terms of the lease are going to be for this RFP. We can't be waiting any longer. I've asked for this a year ago. I asked for this a year ago, over a year ago, two years ago, and it blew us off then. They're blowing us off now again. So, we go back, and now it's back on us again. So, we use our staff to come up with the information that we're seeking now? Okay, let's do it, and I want it within a week. I want the information within a week that we need. So, put all hands on deck on it. Hire another law firm if you have to to get the information you need, or put your specialists on it. But this is not what we need to come up with the lease for the casino. Come on, this is... We demanded... We wanted a lease for the casino on, I think it's September... October 10th, that I think is when we're accepting...
October 6th.
October 6th is when we're accepting... We're going to find out who's going to lease that. And we don't have terms of agreement for a lease, and we're not going to have them until we figure out what's going on out there. I don't... This does not smell good to me. It doesn't sound right. Something does not... Is not figuring out. It's not penciling out in my book, you know?
The thing is, councilman, though, if we find the previous city councils did stuff in the past that was within their purview to do, like, give them the whatever, I don't know... I don't know what the benefit would be to go to the federal government and what you say, the city of Avalon gave away something that they couldn't give away?
Yeah, because it was not ours to give away. It's the state of California's. It's in a trust... It was in a trust back then, either by the State Lands Commission or the California Constitution, and you're not allowed to take high-tidelands from the people of California like that, no less the people of Avalon. I just don't see how this figures out this way. It doesn't make sense to me.
Do you...
And who were the politicians that agreed to this? Where did they work? Who did they work for? Were they legit? I mean, let's get deep into this. Let's investigate this and make sure that something illegal did not incur to make this transaction happen, because this is the biggest land grab I've ever seen in my life. This is the most desirable piece of property in the world. And you know what? We don't want it because we want to be rich. We want it because we have our problems here, too, with our community. You know, we got pensions, we got, you know...
Well, I think, though, Joseph... Excuse me. But he finds the stuff out, we do it, it's still a five-member council that has to decide if and how we go forward.
That's fine. Then let's do that. Let's do that, then.
Yeah, Mayor City Council, you know, essentially, it was land theft out there. It was a conversion of land, and it's just not legal. So, you know, I love the casino. I've come to love the casino. I wasn't alive back in the 20s when this land was taken, but the talk is... Has been, especially with some of the old timers, that this was not a welcome event to take that window out there, that natural, you know, beautiful window where people could see ships arriving and departing. They were not happy about it. William Wrigley didn't even show up for the opening, because there were so many negative issues politically in town over the deal. But the reality is here, anybody that's ever taken marketing, we know that the greatest marketing person of all time was William Wrigley, Jr. And that casino was built as an advertising platform to sell chewing gum. They brought in National Broadcasting Corporation, they did coast-to-coast shows, they advertised cigarettes, and after every cigarette, have a stick of chewing gum. This in the Depression, when everybody was drinking heavy, needing to chew gum after freshen their breath, they were smoking heavier, and they were chewing gum. They made a fortune buying property off the profits from that business, and the city has never benefited. And for the conversion of property in the state of California, the interest that is due on that land conversion since 1928, you're talking 90 years coming up here next year. That's almost $1 billion at 4% to 6% interest, and the law does allow for that when property is taken, in this case, from the public. And this... Whatever this blessing was in 1940, the state attorney general needs to look at it closely. Any federal laws that were violated, the FBI should be involved. The resources need to come in and look at this, because the city of Avalon has been deprived of that income for 80 years now, as of next year. So, this is a serious matter. I've looked into it from different angles myself and had other people look into it, and it's sitting on the table there. And the stack of paper I saw, I think we need to present it to the state attorney general, let the FBI look at it, because there's a lot of federal jurisdiction out there, state jurisdiction, and it was entrusted to the city. So, I think we need to take a serious look at it, because there's a lot of money sitting on the table that the city could use for retirements and other things coming up in the future, and...
Thank you for your comments. Mike, I mean, Scott, I'd like to have a copy of some of those documents, if it's allowed.
Yeah, I'll give you...
Yeah, okay, thank you. And if somebody else wants one, you guys are welcome to have it. It doesn't matter.
And what I'll do is, I'll copy them and send them to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you for your hard work, you guys.
Any other report?
No.
Okay, let's go to councilmember report.
I have none.
I'm just going to do a little report. I did attend the League of California Cities Conference, and I got a list of the classes that I went to, along with this ethics training. I went to mayor's and councilmen members' participation, Prop 64 Grants Use Act. I went to the Marijuana Act. I went to a couple really great general sessions that were very stimulating, and it was absolutely a kick in the pants. And I just want to say, I appreciate the community sending me on this training, and it was very beneficial, and I came back kind of a new person again, so thank you for that. The Vons update I have for you today is just kind of a good one. I think we're moving forward. We're coming to terms with the Vons to get moving on these windows that they were supposed to install a year and a half ago. So, this is on me. I'm the one who created these, and the rest of the council who adopted these conditions of approval. So, we've been waiting for Vons to come forward and start processing these conditions of approval. They're finally doing that by starting with the windows, which is where we're supposed to start before, and there's about 20 other... At least 20 others that we're going to go down the list and make sure that they abide by. This is not on the C-SE members, okay? We figured what we could do for them was very little, considering that we're going to put in an enormous store right next to those neighbors. So, I think we owe them a modicum of gratitude and for their patience and understanding and their work that they've been doing to try to get all this going forward. So, Vons, we're starting to hear from them, and it's positive action. I hope it keeps going in that direction, because they will continue to hear from me, and I don't think bad PR is necessarily good PR. I think it's something that I only do and ride them hard, because people want to see this store put in. They're also on a deadline, too, but it's not what... They said we were going to start the store a year and a half ago, so that's on Vons. I'm distraught about all the restaurants that are closing in Avalon, all the affordable restaurants that are going... Getting shut down. It seems to be meticulous thing that's going on one after the other, and I think you know where all these properties are and which restaurants have been put to the wayside. And they're not being... They're not giving a chance to be moved anywhere else. They're just, "You guys are out of here. See ya down the road." So, those are all the ones that most of us eat at, because we can't afford 20 bucks for a hamburger. We can't afford $50 for a meal. for a hamburger, we can't afford $50 for a meal, so I'm distraught about that. Mr. Nings is gonna be closing soon, totally bummed about that, I think everybody is. It's what a restaurant and service is like, it's like home, it's like going home, it's like a cultural and historical tour when you go in there. Everybody's authentic. Same with some of the Mexican restaurants around here that I've seen disappear, and breakfast areas too. Let's see, S-E-E, water, okay. I just want to update you, we're talking about housing still with the Island Company. We were, as you know, I'm really big on water, and I don't want the water that flows down this canyon, and people down here who've invested in homes have a right to that water. And I'm telling you, we're trying to find a solution to put up some housing, some affordable and dignified housing for the community, one, two, three bedrooms with a nice complex and things like that, and we're trying to do it in a timely manner as well. But my big concern was the water, and it was the first thing I mentioned in my meeting today with Paul De Meyer and Chris Wilhelm, and my good city manager, David Jenkins. So I also understand that Edison has, so what the deal is, is Edison is not gonna own, the Island Company's not gonna own the water, they're gonna contribute their water from underneath the golf course, down 700 feet to the community. They're gonna do, so they're not gonna own it, which I was very relieved about that, because I don't want to see any individual stakeholder own the water. You have a right to the water, the water's yours, and the people who live and love here. What I found out also today was there is, Edison is considering the pipe, so this is a new update. They were considering putting in a million gallon tank here in town, and we're gonna feed that tank, so we have a million gallon extra storage, but I think some of us on the council made a point that we have a 9 million gallon tank up there at Wrigley Reservoir. Why on earth are we gonna build a million gallon tank in an area we don't even have space at? So, but we were going ahead with it, because that's all they gave us. But we said, we want the desalinization unit to feed water and pump it up, up the four miles up Summit Road, or up that area, and feed the 9 million gallon tank at Wrigley Reservoir. That makes sense, doesn't it? Well, they didn't go for it. Well, I understand, now they're going for it. They came around, they've listened to their better senses, and now I'm understanding that that is a solution to a lot of problems we have. We're going ahead with the other elements in that plan, but I think that was the main one that was missing, and I'm really relieved at this point that we're still working on water. And that feeds Avalon, and it also feeds Hamilton Cove, so we're killing two birds with one stone, so thank you very much, that's all I have.
Mayor, pretend.
Thank you, Joe. I also attended the League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento. Joe forgot to mention that we went across the street to the Capitol and visited our assemblyman or state senator.
Ole took me to the Capitol, that was one, thank you, by the way. That was so nice.
The ugly pension and post-benefit costs are still lurking out there, and had a very interesting seminar about revocable trusts, so we can throw some money in there, so they don't have to throw it at Pers and let them twiddle it away. So I think Bob got the same stuff. It was just a busy little place up there, it was really good. One thing I need to clarify from last meeting, during the discussion we had about island navigation and the floats and the moins and things like that, the, what I thought the direction was, is that they will be paying for the float when it's in the harbor at half, the half-year lease rate, and then they'll be paying for the moins that the boats are on for half-year lease rate, and then, but they're not gonna be paying anything this year, because they had no use of the moins this year, because they didn't get them, they were told. So they do owe some moins fee, I believe, because they have boats on moins, but I don't think it's a big thing that they were talking about, so that could just change, and.
You got that, whatever that was?
Yes.
Yes, we got that, yeah.
Okay.
We will update the minutes.
We talked prior.
That wasn't specifically in the minutes, or in the actions.
You're going to Hawaii tomorrow?
Not on city business.
No.
Wife business, yes, that's it, yeah.
You don't even have to change shirts.
I think I will, though.
I was also at the League, went to cannabis as well, but one of the things, the exhibit halls are also pretty cool, because people have a lot of good innovative things up there. But again, I've been talking about solar on city business, on city facilities, and we know there are businesses out there that install them, maintain them, whatever, reduces our rates, and the beauty over the long run is that the rates go up, we still pay the same amount. So to help us figure this out, I'm asking the council if we can direct finance, because we see that our utility bills are about $30,000, our utility bill's about $30,000 a month to Edison. But can we break that down onto what is electric and what is gas and water? Can we pull the electric out? Because if we're gonna move forward and maybe meet with these folks to talk about solar, we need to look at what our savings possibly might be?
Yes, we just recently arranged with Edison to receive our bill electronically, so that every meter is sent to us, the meter readings are sent to us electronically for the last few months. And what we will be able to do then is to go into detail with each meter, if we want, each type of meter, and group them into power, water, and propane.
Doesn't your city bill look like mine, it'll go, this is G1, this is water, and this is da-da, just that simply?
Yes, but each one of those has a meter number assigned to it, and the city now, for the last few months, has been receiving that data electronically by meter. So we'll be able to give you very, as much detail as you want.
I just want to know how much you're paying for.
The answer to your question is yes.
Okay, I just want to know how much you're paying for electricity.
Okay, and for what period of time would you like?
I don't know, can you go back, at least six, well, six, I don't know, capture a little bit of winter and a little bit of summer perhaps, to see if there's a difference? I don't know that you need a whole year, but.
I'll have to double check, but we just recently, like around March or April timeframe is when we started to get the data electronically. So definitely going forward, no problem. How far back we can go, I would have to look to see if Edison or we can do that.
Be fun to see what some of that kind of winter stuff is versus the summer stuff. But, yeah, thank you. And Janice Hahn was here yesterday, and Mark that does libraries, and Jessica Ho that does health, and so we had a nice lunch with them yesterday, and we talked about issues such as funding, funding for different, I don't know, funding for recreation and that kind of stuff, talked about mental health services, need for mental health family planning.
Library expansion.
Library expansion, and they were gonna tour that yesterday, and the good thing is, we are on their radar, they're very interested in keeping in touch with us and letting, you know, listening to what our needs are, so it was nice to see Janice, that's it.
Annie? I forgot one thing, can we mention Patrick O'Donnell, our assembly member, will be in Avalon Thursday, from 10 to 11 at the Avalon Grill?
Yes.
Yeah, well, everybody's welcome.
They'll get you in there one way or another. So anyway, go in there and talk to him, he's a good guy, and he's easy to talk to, and give him your concerns, if there's anything coming up, or anything that you'd like that's gonna be going through the assembly or legislature up in Sacramento, he's a good guy to talk to, and he's our representative, he works for us, and.
Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, Earl, communication, this is an opportunity for people from the public to speak on an item not on the agenda, you'll be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Mayor, can I backtrack to Ole Olson and find out, I'm not sure of the clarification on the actions.
They're going to pay for the summer for the big float at half the, whatever the size float annual lease fee is, they'll pay the annual lease fee, no, they'll pay for moins when they're using moins, and boats aren't tied up to the float.
Okay, are we doing the no-back fees, will we do, or are we starting when they got in the, this year in May? Are we charging from May?
Yes, charging for this year, for the city, for the float that ties up to our float.
Chip might be asking you again tomorrow.
Sorry, when does this start now? Now, is this, what about the moing fees that were due last summer and the lease rate?
This year's lease rate?
Yeah, January 2017.
2017, okay.
So they still owe that?
No, they didn't have use of them, you told them they didn't have them.
Well, the float was still there, and the glass-bottom boats were still there, so what about those lease rates?
When the boats were there, they paid the daily rate?
On the dock. The boats were still on the dock, and the dock was still in place through the summer. Do they, do they pay the lease rate for that?
Are you saying for summer 2016, or 2017?
Well, I'm kind of confused now on the dates, I believe Cheryl sent an email to Scott today about the moing fees, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Scott?
For 2017, what we're talking about, for this summer.
Yes, the past summer. When the floats here, they pay the lease fee, when the boats are tied up to the float, they pay the lease fee, when the boats are on the regular moins, they pay the moing fees.
The moing fees.
But there is no moing sublease, and there's no moing maintenance.
So they don't pay the moing maintenance from the beginning?
Because they didn't have the moings.
Because they don't have the lease moings anymore, they don't have to pay.
But at the time, when the shoreboat took over, the new shoreboat company came in, from that time to that time, those moings are.
According to Cheryl's memo, the boats are out here January 10th.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Cheryl's memo from a month ago or so, that the shoreboats atomized when the boats were here, and most of the boats left around the 10th of January.
Right, but the two big boats and the other boats were still here, so two of them.
They should pay moing fees.
All right.
Is that perfectly clear?
What?
Is that perfectly clear, Denise? Is that perfectly clear?
No, not really, clear as bud.
I'll send you a memo.
Yeah, who's got, who's got it?
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley, and there was three things I wanted to say. So Patrick O'Donnell, our state assemblyman, will be at the Avalon Grill Thursday from 10 to 11, for anybody to attend. Did somebody say it already? Okay, sorry, missed it at the very beginning. And then the second thing was, we're taking signatures in the arcade, there's a group of us that are taking signatures to talk about the DACA Act, that you already have sent something to POTUS, about, you know, that we want it to be fair for them, and so we want to present that to Alan Lowenthal when he comes in November, so if anybody wants to come and sign the petitions to hand to Lowenthal about the DACA Act that is under scrutiny right now. And then I wanted to make, I just wanted to say this in Spanish about the wonderful thing you guys did on the website, that it's translated, so if maybe people are watching at home, would you mind?
No.
Okay. So quiero anunciar al público que la ciudad se han hecho algo muy bonito en la red por el lugar que representa la ciudad de Avalon, y se puede ver en español y también en inglés. So se puede ver que son las agendas de cada junta que tenemos aquí, so, perlo.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's very good.
Okay. All right, consent calendar, we're moving right along now, now we got speed. Okay.
I see, consent calendar, item two, consent color actions, it's, the first item is to approve actions from September 5, 2017 Regular City Council Meeting. Item three is to approve expenditures, total expenditure amount of $3,343,320.70. Item number four is to approve the funding agreement for the desalinization unit for Southern California Edison's Santa Catalina Island Water Utility, and that is, again, the resolution is to approve that funding in the amount of $500,000, which is a contribution from the county to the city for this project. And item number five is a resolution approving the adoption of the City of Avalon Health Premium Reimbursement Plan. Item number six is an item to surrender and abandon vessel exchange grant expenditures. The recommended action is to authorize the expenditure of SAVE grant funds in the amount of $21,787 to $15,000 to be reimbursed to the city for the disposal of the surrendered abandoned vessel duet, and $6,787 to be reimbursed for the support of the Richardson Bay Marina Abandoned Vessel Program. Item number seven is the annual allocation for transit funds. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution approving the annual application for TDA, that's Transit Development Act, Article 8 funds, from the current fiscal year. Item number eight is to ratify prior actions to authorize site remediation at the Avalon Cemetery Expansion Project. The action is to make the finding that a need existed for site remediation at the Avalon Cemetery Expansion beyond the original contracted scope and ratify approval expenditures of not to exceed an amount of $28,769.61 for the Avalon Cemetery Expansion. I didn't turn the page. Item number nine is repairs to the Catherine Lift Station 18 horsepower pump motor assembly. Authorize an expenditure for the repair of the Catherine Lift Station 18 horsepower pump motor assembly to be funded by sewer fund in the amount not to exceed $11,000. Item number 10 is emergency repairs to the Aurora Centrifugal Fire Pump. Recommended action is to authorize the expenditure for the repair of the Aurora Centrifugal Fire Pump to be funded by Salt Water Fund 112255124 in the amount not to exceed $13,000.
Okay, team?
I don't need to pull anything.
Okay, then I, can I just ask, like, four little questions on things, and then I'm good too? Okay, on Southern California Edison, it says that we will be receiving monthly reports on DCEL. Are those in fact coming through?
Yes, we've got them, yes.
Okay, so you can share those with us, because we are not getting them all. Last time we got one was a while ago.
March.
Okay, and do those reports go for 10 years, for the length of this agreement?
I think it's 20 years.
Okay, I read something about 10.
And it may be 10 or 20, but we've been getting them recently. Yeah, they missed a month, and then we've dropped them, but we've been getting them.
Okay, and we don't have Audrey here, huh? So on the adoption of approving the application for transit funds, so the total is $359,000 if I'm looking at this. So the other part, and this is for 141 for dialer rate and fixed route, so what do we use the other money for? Oh, thank you, Bob Mesher.
So what's your question?
Okay, on our allocation, it's, the total allocation is $359,841.
Yeah, this is a routine action item, it's just required by Metro for us to authorize that as part of obtaining these funds for our transportation program.
So do we do it, but, okay, so we're only spending half of it, so I guess the question is, how do we spend the other half, the other $200,000? I mean, will that come somehow, somewhere later? Because it looks like we have $359,000, and we're only asking for 141, I guess the question is, where's the other 219,000?
We'll be spending all of the funds from Metro. I would have to look at the item a little bit closer.
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask you about that today, and I just assumed Audrey, I mean, I don't know if that's funding.
But my general understanding of that action item is that this is a routine annual action item for the funds that are designated for Metro to pay for transportation program that we have here, and it just needs city council action to.
Boy, I totally get it, I just wondered about the other 219,000.
But all of the funds will be spent.
What, we give it to cross channel? No, I know, so I'm going, this is saying what we're gonna do with the money, so I'm just wondering what we do with the other 200 and some thousand dollars, that's all. Okay, that's good.
And we can get you that answer tomorrow.
Okay, well, I don't think it's that important.
But I can assure you that we spend all of the money that we get from Metro.
I know. Oh, and maybe that's for the subsidy, subsidy, is that what you were trying to say? Okay, and number nine, with Mr. Greenlaw? But, is he here for me?
He is.
Oh, okay, so just repairs to Catherine Lift Station, this is, don't mean to sound petty, the total estimate for the repair is $9,375. In DS Engineering has provided an additional service request for $10,000, so staff is requesting an amount not to exceed $11,000. That looks like $20,000 to me.
We're asking for $11,000, okay? Recommended action.
Because you said in ES has provided an additional request, so now it looks like 20,000.
No, I just think that not as written.
The pass-through amounts.
Yeah.
It's the amount of the service estimate plus the additions from ES.
So there's some markup from ES, but then there's also some contingency in that.
So it's not two separate numbers, I guess, is what I'm asking?
It's $11,000 is what we're asking for.
It has provided for additional services totaling the amount. I see how you can read it both ways, but it is, the additional services is the $1,400, and they're asking for $11,000, as in not to exceed.
Just the way it was written, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And item number 10, I guess we don't have to go out to bid on that one for the same reason we didn't have to go out to bid on this other one, on item nine, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Move staff on two to 10.
Okay, move staff.
Second, we actually got three estimates for that repair, though, too.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay, I, okay.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, before we vote, yeah?
Yeah. So it hears from the agreement that we're not requesting the same extensive information that we got previously in terms of Dcel water production. Before we got what, which unit, how much was being produced, what the demand was, and then a statement of the reason why, if it wasn't being produced, why it wasn't being produced, which fell into one of four categories or five categories. Planned maintenance, unplanned maintenance, algae bloom, or there just wasn't the demand. I mean, that's essentially, there were like four reasons. Is the report going to still include that information?
It's the same report we've been getting.
It's the same report, oh, okay. It just seemed, it seemed like very short description, that's perfect.
Yeah.
There's a motion for two to 10.
Joe seconded.
Yeah. Any further comments? Call for the vote.
All righty. Sorry, four eyes. I couldn't see yours only.
On the bottom again.
Okay. We want a little break? Do we want a break before we talk about law enforcement? Okay.
Five minutes.
No, somebody says. Okay, we just need a little party break. I'm sorry. And we're back from break, thank you very much. And we're talking about State of Avalon Law Enforcement Philosophy Discussion. We're continuing this from last time.
Yes, Mayor, on the 15th of August, the city council held a public discussion on the philosophy and approach they wish law enforcement to take in Avalon. The council at that time heard testimony from members of the public and from council members who voiced their opinions. It was a good meeting, but you decided, because we had one council member who was unable to attend, and there was more conversation to be had, that you would have a subsequent meeting. This is that meeting. One of the things that came out of that discussion that appeared to come out of that discussion was that no one wanted to see strict enforcement of all laws and people carted off to jail for every offense. That would be a lot of people probably overall. But it was stressed that it is important that antisocial behavior have consequences of the law or the law means nothing. Parents, you talked about, and it was talked about there, parents, school officials, teachers, religious organizations, community groups and service organizations and law enforcement must work hand in hand to help young people in our community become good citizens. So this is a follow-up to that meeting. What the desired outcome would be to have the council give guidance to the commander of our sheriff's department here in Avalon on the philosophy that the city wants to see law enforcement use. Of course, the sheriff's department has to comply with state law as it relates to many offenses. But what is the philosophy and approach? And that's with additional public testimony and your discussion, that would be a hopeful outcome of this evening's meeting.
Great. And I believe we've all, all the council has received communications on things from, you know, from seat belts and requiring, you know, things to be firmed up and things that are laws to be kind of adhered to. And I think in the past, the community has gone on a, excuse me. Excuse me, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay.
They had no idea.
They had no idea.
I know. So the past five years, prior to the arrival of Captain Hawking, it was pretty much a, you get a warning, you get a warning. Maybe you don't get a warning. And I think there are some things that the community and some of us sitting here are very adamant about that those consequences that the city manager was talking about needs to happen. You can only warn people so much. And I don't know if we want to take it by areas that are seen as problematic and see what our approach to those problematic areas are. Because it goes from seat belts and drunken publics and drinking on the beach to docks to kids speeding, kids out at wherever they're hanging out. And I don't know how specific, but I know that some are very much, there's a point where it's against, things are against the law and they need to be dealt with. Because in the instances of young children or young people, many times their parents don't know what they're up to. And if we continue to just ignore or warn or whatever, parents may not be aware of what their children are getting into. So I think there needs to be, personally, I think there needs to be more interface and more.
Well, maybe some parents don't care.
Well, and that's okay, but they need to be aware. That's all we can do. But parents are.
They're aware, they just don't care.
Well, parents are responsible for minors, as I know with my son. I was legally and financially responsible for him till the age of 18.
Some, some that is.
Yeah, and I think that if that's the way, sometimes that gets the parents involved when all of a sudden their kid is costing money or they're having to take them to court. So I don't think, and if doing that one time and the parents get so mad that that kid then is not drinking alcohol or not smoking dope when he shouldn't be smoking dope or ditching school or whatever, because truancy is another issue, I think.
Do you know? Well, we need to know some facts about, because we know we're talking about this straight up and down. I mean, this is going to affect the entire community and how the law enforcement operates in the community.
Well, no, that's why we're talking.
Okay.
That's why we're talking.
I think we need to know facts, though.
No, but, no, if there are truant kids, there are truant kids. If they're not truant kids, there aren't truant kids. You don't need a number of that. If law enforcement officer finds a kid at 1:00 in the afternoon and he ditches school, he's a truant.
I don't, we don't know that there are a bunch of truant kids. There's a truant officer that patrols, and whenever a kid doesn't show up to school, the parents are called and this guy's standing out to, if the parents don't answer, the kid's not around, the parents, this guy John goes out to find him. I think there's policing in that area, in that particular aspect of it.
And if that's all taken care of already, that is, that's fine.
I think the school's pretty good about that.
That is fine. However, when, if they do see a kid on the street and you can recognize a lot of the local kids, what are you doing? Just a simple, what are you doing puts kids and people in check, you know? So.
So what can we change here? I mean, I'm trying to find out what the problem is because I think the law enforcement is doing a great job. I have major concerns about terrorism and things that are way above what we're talking about here. A kid smoking pot at the casino, I mean, yeah, then we need to grab him, call his parents up. They do that.
No, they don't.
They call, sure they do, they called me up before. Hey, your kid's out on the basketball court, come and get him.
Well, you might think it's adequate. I think if we hear from people from the community, you're going to see that they don't think it's adequate.
I think they're pretty sharp on this stuff. I just, I'm concerned about the big things, the big things that could affect this community for generations to come and not, and yes, the kids matter. Maybe a little baby in a golf cart with no car seat, that kind of stuff maybe needs to be fixed because that little baby has no conception that it's in danger. The parents need to be reminded of that, maybe unsafe vehicles, things like that. Speeding vehicles, we've got letters about that. Biting dogs, you know, dogs on the loose, which is something we address. But I'm wondering what the huge problem is here. I think the law enforcement is very active and they attend to every single problem that we have. You can call them up at any time and they'll come out and they'll, they'll be, there are beckoning call. But the bigger things that are being masked, that we don't see, are being taken care of too. And that's this huge problem we have with active shooters and terrorism and bad people that are out there to hurt us. I mean, that kind of thing is what I want to use the law enforcement for along with creating peace and harmony in the community. We have 35 bars in this town, we're going to have drunks, believe me. And I don't know, think we should go around whacking everyone on the head with a belly club and throwing them in the jail. I think the mean ones need to go to jail. The ones who are just got too, got a little too drunk, we need to give them a ride home and say, hey, put your husband to bed or put your wife to bed or put your son to bed and, you know, that way. But I'm trying to understand what the problem is with the philosophy that we have here.
I'd get calls all the time that we called them, they showed up hours later, they didn't show up. I mean, I think the form of accountability, and there are people here that are going to, I hopefully will speak to this, it's kind of frustrating for me, and I hope you're not going to say, well, then Annie, you need to let me know when these things happen. They shouldn't be happening at all, I guess is the thing. If you're called, you show up. If you go out to Casino Point and you see the kids, you corral them and call their parents. You take away their car keys. I mean, that kind of stuff seems very simple.
They do call the parents. They already do. They've called me, they've called me firsthand, I'll tell you right now. Ready to go out in the middle of the night.
Well, and you are the councilman of a kid, so maybe you're more apt to get a call than other people. I don't know.
No, all the kids' parents were called, there was five kids out, and they were all called and they couldn't leave until the parents came down and grabbed and got them.
Well, if that's a policy they're now doing, that is good, I don't know that it consists of.
This was months ago, this was a year ago that this happened.
Well, I'm not going to debate when people tell me that they go, when the preacher walks out to, under federal walks out to Casino Point and all the kids are smoking and drinking and no law enforcement. They know where the trouble spots are, so all it takes is patrol, to me. I'm sorry, Captain Hawking, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I'm hearing a lot of frustration from the community and so I get frustrated as well.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And I can tell everybody, especially people on TV that are watching this, if there is ever an allegation that a LA County Deputy Sheriff does not respond to a call for service, I want them to call me on my cellphone, call the station, have the station call me. That will be addressed 100%. I just need to know the date and the time they called because I can look it up on the, all the calls are recorded and I can check their logs and make sure they respond. So if that ever comes up, please have them call me directly and it will be addressed in a heartbeat. That's number one. Okay, number two is, I receive a lot of emails from just different people, people from the community, people from the city, just all kinds of people. And some of the concerns that they come up with, the first one is speeding on Pebbley Beach Road. That comes up over and over. The speed limit is 20 miles an hour out there. And our one deputy that we have on duty, I make sure he goes out there, he or she, whoever it might happen to be, and conduct traffic enforcement out there. Question is, if we see somebody doing 25 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, driving to work, there's no other vehicles around, do you want us to stop and issue them a citation? There's some issues about citations on that road. Number one is the road is not a, basically you have an engineer come out and you do a survey on the road and so forth. However, I really think it's reasonable if you're pacing the, excuse me, you're pacing the vehicle and you look at your speedometer and it says, I don't know, 80 miles an hour, you could estimate that other person's doing 80 and a judge is going to see it your way. So there's some things that are, just if it's so adamant that the person's doing 80, that's an easy thing, we would issue a citation for that.
Yeah.
Another thing is, it says drinking and driving in golf carts, okay? Do you want us to set up a DUI checkpoint on Saturday night on Sumner and Beacon? And every golf cart that comes through, we make sure that people aren't drinking and driving. That's what we do on the mainland, keeps people safe. Do we want that? Next thing, dogs on Front Street. Okay, we've talked hours and hours about dogs on Front Street. And what we do now, and let me give you an example. I'm walking out to the pier to get some fish for my lunch and I see a dog on Front Street. I go up to the gentleman, I say, sir, you can't have your dog on Front Street. He goes, oh, it's a service dog. Right then, the dog lifts his leg and urinates right in front of the El Gallion with people sitting there eating. And I'm like, well, a service dog or not, you can't have that dog there. I mean, the dog cannot be urinating, say it is a service dog, 100%, he's got all the papers, everything's 100% service dog. He's urinating right where two people are eating, a husband and wife or boyfriend and girlfriend are sitting there eating. You can't have that. So do you want us to issue citations for dogs on Front Street? The next one is dogs on the beach, same thing. If dogs are on Front Street, dogs on the beach, do what we do now. We go out there on Front Street or the beach and we tell the people, hey, you cannot have your dog out here. The city came up with a flyer that tells where you can and can't have your dog or you have to have, dog has to have a muzzle, and we hand them one of those. And sometimes you get people, most of the time, people are very cooperative. They say, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, blah, blah, blah. And then they move on and go up the side street or what have you. Okay, sometimes you get people like the gentleman that said his dog was a service dog, real bad attitude, dog's urinating, and I go, you got, you know, two choices here. I either give you a citation or you move on up the street right away. He moved up right street right away. But those are the things that keep coming up over and over. And I have the email right here that I'm reading it right off. That's what the people are concerned about. So that's kind of the guidance that I am looking for to pass on to my deputies. And some things, domestic violence, we have no choice. We have to arrest if there's domestic violence. Obviously murder, robbery, rape, pillaging, all the other serious crimes, we have no choice. Okay, that's what the law says. But you get, let's say the example, you get somebody, a juvenile that is drinking, okay? The law says we have to read them the rights, we have to bring them to the station. Our policy says we have to fill out a crime report and we have to present it to the, now it goes to the probation office. Probation office looks at it, sees what the person's, how many passed arrest. Is it a criminal juvenile or is it just somebody that decided to have his first beer out at the casino? There's a big difference between those. Is the kid doing drive-by shootings on the mainland and now he's out here and we happen to come across him? For example, today, we received a call of a suspicious person, turned out to be a gang member, alleged gang member from the city of Wilmington. Well, first thing the deputies did, two deputies, I had one deputy on duty, two deputies that came in, stayed on their own time, went out with the one deputy on duty. We contacted the person, we made sure he didn't have any weapons, we ran him for warrants. We did all that to keep the community safe. That's what we want to do. And I'm just basically just looking for a little guidance. It really frustrates me when I hear that the deputies are lazy, they aren't doing a good job, they, you know, all these different things, when I see what they are doing. I put that article in the newspaper at the request of the city council and the community, everybody combined, and it seems like while I'm writing this, every single time it's somebody in custody. The one deputies, two deputies, it was a sergeant and a deputy. And they go to a family disturbance call. During this family disturbance, the suspect ends up assaulting his sister, biting her in the arm. The deputies go to arrest him and he tries to dive out the second story window. Deputy saves him by grabbing him by the feet, deputy gets cut by the glass, suspect gets cut by the glass, all these things, I don't get one call on that. Hey, great job, how's the deputies doing? I get this email, hey, saw a dog on Front Street today. Well, you have to look at the seriousness of the crimes and what the deputies are working on. And like I've said before, I am here for the city. I will have the sheriff's department work any way the city wants. I think everybody can tell how serious I am about law enforcement and working with the community. As soon as there was that bison shooting, the second one, I have Internal Affairs investigating it. I have a shooting investigative team. I have all these things going on where I have my executives, the assistant sheriff, the undersheriff saying, John, we've never seen such a thing for shooting an animal. We have a shooting team, we don't handle, the shooting team's coming to me, hey, who got shot? I go, oh, it was a bison. This is first animal shooting we've had. So it's because I'm so adamant about it being investigated the right way. I don't want anybody to come back and say that Captain Hawking, he covered up the investigation, he interviewed people himself and, you know, all these different things. I want to make sure that we're transparent. We want everybody to know what we're doing. We want to be, we're here for the community. And that's, I just need some guidance. That's basically it. And like I said, my. And like I said, my, this is my community now. Yes, I wasn't born here. Yes, I haven't lived here for 20 years. I've lived here coming up on six months now, but this is where I live. I don't live on the mainland. I have my house here, so when my family, my mom and dad come over and so forth, I want them to be safe walking down, you know, down Front Street. I don't want them to get bit by a dog. I don't want them, you know, anything like that, but that's pretty much where I'm at.
Any comments?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Anybody have anything to say?
I was going to touch on that matter with the dogs in just a second, but I was going to go ahead with what Joe was mentioning earlier about terrorism or active shooters and stuff like that. We actually have a naval base that's south of here, and they have SEALs out there, the third phase of SEAL training, and then EOD and a lot of other good guys out there. But there's officers out there, military officers, where you can just make a quick phone call and say, "Hey, could you guys give us a quick training, maybe a day or a weekend class? Maybe train the, I don't know if you have to train maybe possibly on the Cali Express or whatnot, or maybe the deputies over here could learn some things and maybe pass it on in like classroom-type things and whatnot like that."
That's what Sheriff Hawking is an expert at, is terrorism. So I'm very grateful about that. Because that's one of my biggest concerns in this community. The little things don't really bother me too much. I think those are things that the city, that are deficiencies within the city and what we're doing as parents and as a community. It's the big things that I'm concerned about, and the protecting the innocence of children and older people and our visitors and people that don't expect speeding cars coming by. And it's like, you know, if somebody deserves to get a speeding ticket, they do. I mean, if it's speeding in an area where there's a bunch of people and a bunch of traffic, I mean, believe me, Pebbley Beach Road is one of these roads that I have to blow my, the carbon out of my car every once in a while. When I see there's no pedestrians, there's no cars coming, I'm going to floor it, and nobody sees it, nobody knows it. I mean, but when people do that, when there's a bunch of people on the road, and you're trying to get to work, and you're going to, you're going to take it out on everybody on the road to get to work 30 seconds, you know, quicker, even if that, I got a problem with that. I understand people's concerns about Pebbley Beach Road and dogs on Front Street, that, you know, people, you know, what is it? Do you want, do you give tickets on Front Street? Do you not want to? Thank you for your input on, because I know you're a military man, and I thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you for your support.
No, my pleasure. I appreciate my veterans very much.
But there's actually a lot of tourists that come out here that are active military or prior military, and I actually just ran into some JTAG guys that were spec ops in the Air Force that were out here. And it's kind of like what you were mentioning with the kids. If you know something's wrong, somebody's going to say something and kind of, you know, guide you in the right direction and say, "Hey, what are you doing? Fix it," and whatnot.
Maybe our community can get together and help fix all those problems. If we're having problems with our kids not being at school, or smoking dope, or drinking, or we got Choices is working on that. Maybe we can take some of this money that we're getting from this cannabis thing, if we actually generate money from it, and we can support Choices a little more. Maybe those are the, those will be our go-to people to hype up the education on, for the kids, you know, to keep them engaged. I think Sheriff Hawking's behind you. It'd be nice, because he's got some reinforcement on safety issues. Appreciate your input, though. Thank you, David.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention about, he brought up terrorism, and our, the sheriff's department's jurisdiction for Avalon Sheriff Station covers all of San Clemente Island also. Not the island itself, around the island, all the waters. The Navy has the jurisdiction of the island itself, but we go out there and we work with them. Our, the second month I was here, working with the city manager, David Jenkins, is I brought over our department's terrorism experts, and we had a first responder class. And basically, that class consisted of Harbor Patrol, the Rangers, Avalon City Fire, County Fire, Sheriff's Department, Conservancy.
Did you get our code enforcement in there?
Think that was it. No, code enforcement.
Maybe next time, we can get them.
I was trying to think of everybody that I had. But we are working on keeping this city safe from terrorism. And that's the benefit of the sheriff's department patrolling this jurisdiction, is in minutes, I can have hundreds of deputies here, SWAT teams, boats, all these different people, and now we're taking it to the next level where they're going to come over here, the sheriff's department's terrorist experts, and they're going to identify areas of the city that possibly would need to be changed to make the community safer, especially the tourists. We have the sheriff's department boats that come out, they go around the cruise ships that are out there, they're patrolling. But I wanted to include everybody in this, and we do have a great working relationship with the Navy, because they're so close. I mean, they're right there.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say.
That's what that gentleman mentioned, too. So I appreciate both you guys and what you both have contributed to the conversation. I want to say, if we go backwards, okay, so we don't want to be like our past administration in law enforcement, right? Because they were too soft. But just remember, before that, we had you-know-who, and we had a nightmare. It was absolutely, I would, the police administration before Captain Federal absolutely terrorized this community for a decade. There was two, I'm not even going to mention their names, you all know who they were. There were two captains that came in here, and lieutenants, I think, and they terrorized this community. They were terrible. We had to get them kicked out of here, and that's where we got a little bit laid back on the law, which I didn't mind, because it was better than being terrorized by the sheriffs, and everybody went to jail. Kids, drunks, anybody who got caught doing anything went to jail. And there was abuse, there was police abuse, there was a lot worse things in that going on day and night. And it was a terrible thing, and we were more afraid of the sheriffs than we were of the robbers and the other people that were out there, the bad people. I mean, you can handle that. When somebody comes into your house, you can deal with that if they come in to hurt you, but when you're out on the street and your kid is out there, and the sheriff sneak up on him and just slap the cuffs on him or put a gun to their heads, believe me, there's some consequences that are going to happen there. And you all know that that's not what we have now. You've heard Sheriff Hawking is straight up, he's not Mr. Federal, but then again, he's not the guys before that. And you know what? Thank God for that, because that was a bad time in this town, and we don't want to go back down that road again.
Right.
So, so let's just understand that what we have here is, the times are changing, and obviously, law enforcement's changing, but what's nice is, he said it himself, you can call him up, and he'll be there for you if you got a beef. It's not like it used to be where you called the police up, and you complained, and then next thing you know, you're in jail. A couple nights later, your kid's in jail because they didn't like you complaining. That's not going to happen, not under this city council administration or under Captain Hawking's administration. Cops aren't going to do that to you for that, for that reason. And if something happens that's kind of funny, then come to me. I'll take care of it. Me and Captain Hawking have a great relationship, and then we always have the county supervisor's office or, you know, his superior that we can deal with. But right now, it's not even necessary. We, I think we're getting what we wanted, and we're getting what we paid for and then some. But with that being said, Carl, sorry, go ahead.
I have one concern. It's not, I don't want it to be like looked at as any criticism or anything. I think getting gang members and stuff is great, but one concern I noticed was that we have a small staff. There's a small police staff. And what concerns me is I've actually taken pictures of it, because I didn't believe it myself until it happened, but you, on a day that you have three police officers on patrol, they're all sitting for 30 minutes in front of C.C. Gallagher's, and then they're all spending another 30 minutes together in front of the stage. If you can have three officers on patrol, can't one of them be on one side of Front Street and the other be on the other side of Front Street to kind of help catch things more? We want more of a presence, right? And so if there's a limited staff, and we are staffing three people to be out on patrol, why do all three? I know sometimes you have to have pairs and stuff like that, so maybe there's pairs, but...
Are you talking about, so the summertime patrol officers? Because I think they work for free, and we, I think they're put up in a hotel.
But that's beside the point.
No.
When I see three officers out, they're being paid to be out.
I have witnessed that myself.
Right, aren't they? So that's my concern.
I don't think they're getting paid, actually. But yeah, they do stick together. I've seen that. I get your point.
One should maybe be patrolling the streets, one should be down on Front Street, checking Front Street, but there's more than just Front Street that needs to be patrolled.
Well, there's Pebbley Beach, there's the...
I understand funding and staff is limited, but that's one concern I had, was I saw three people all together in one spot when they could have been in multiple spots. And I don't want it to be criticism, because I think you're doing a good job.
That's an observation I made.
Right. So I was just, I gave you that look like you and I have not had this conversation before tonight, but that was one of my first comments, where when, Lieutenant, you're asking us, you see something, you say something, if you want us to, you know, tell you some of the things that are troubling, this is one of them. So I made a point, I was out every single night during Labor Day weekend, and this is exactly what I saw, is exactly what Carl is saying, and it was walking down for dinner at 7:20-ish at night, and there's three deputies together in front of C.C. Gallagher's, and walking home at 9:30, I think it was 10 o'clock the night of the concert, three deputies in front of C.C. Gallagher's. And I'm not going to sit here and say that they were there for the entire time, but it struck me as odd enough that I actually photographed it, because I wanted to remember that moment, that yes, the same spot. And it doesn't mean that they didn't patrol, or they didn't jump in the vehicle during that two-hour period and go around. It's the appearance of that to a person who's, you know, walking around, that's not seeing that spread out.
Having a present deters a lot.
The appearance of three people together on a busy weekend, when you've got maybe 20 people in front of C.C. Gallagher's, but you've got 200 people in, you know, a busier part of town. So I think on one level, there is that appearance. So I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off, but I'm going to keep going with my thoughts, because I don't want to, I don't want to lose my opportunity to speak.
Is it okay to answer that real quick?
Sure.
I'll never defend the deputies if I believe they did wrong. Okay? The three deputies that you're talking about, they're called reserve deputies. They, we have, one deputy is an actual deputy for the city of Avalon. What we do is, we get reserve deputies over here, so they can, basically, the three, they're older, they are not as trained as our deputies, they are about little less than half the price for the city to have them out there, but they're additional eyes. With that being said, I can't send them by themselves to domestic violence calls without a regular deputy there. There's things I can't do, even though they are trained. But with that being said, I take that criticism to heart, and I can spread them out and make sure that that doesn't happen in the future.
Right. I mean, chances are slim that you're going to have such a serious call right down there on Front Street. So I think it's that, that presence, that thought, that, oh my gosh, I saw a sheriff's deputy, as I'm walking down Front Street, I saw a sheriff's deputy at C.C. Gallagher's, I'm now seeing one in front of the pier, I'm seeing one in front of Algalion, wow, there's, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to stay on good behavior because people are around.
And I'll address that next time. They will not be together. No problem at all.
Okay, and adding to that, though, like the kids out drinking up at Three Palms are out there, because I've talked to those gentlemen for about a half an hour a couple of weekends ago, and they can't get in a cop car and use anything else? They can't issue a citation for anything?
Sure. Yeah, we can issue a citation for all these things.
Or they can round up the kids, they could go out to Pebbley, or out to wherever and say, "Kids, they're capable of retaining these kids until their parents came? They can do that?"
Yes, they can. And we can, I mean, we'll write, we have to write a crime report, and they're allowed to do that. They're deputy sheriffs, but I just, they just aren't trained as, they have careers. They might work at a music industry, they might work somewhere else, where the deputy is always looking at case law, he's always learning from other deputies, he's reading all these things. But with that being said, like I said, I would never defend a deputy if I feel they did wrong, and you're 100% right. If the three are standing there, if we spread them out, that'll be done. That's easy.
So the reserves do get paid?
Yes, they do. They're a little less than half the price of a regular deputy sheriff. And the city also pays for their hotel, because they don't live on the island. They come over for the weekend, they stay in a hotel, and then they go back after the weekend.
So after we pay for their hotels, well, it doesn't matter, they, we have to have them here anyways, right? I mean, we need them for protection.
Yeah, we have one deputy on duty, and the cruise ship drops off 2,600 people if everybody gets off the boat, and then, so on busy weekends, Fourth of July, Labor Day, all the holidays, we usually do have the reserves there.
Could I ask?
Two more comments.
Okay, sure.
I think you know, I prefer to have certain conversations where I give you a heads-up, that I'm going to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
And at least let you be prepared. But I want you to know the disappointment that I have regarding the bison incident. I believe you, as the lieutenant, have brought in as much of the powers that be that you could in order to investigate this incident. My disappointment solely lies in the fact that there were many of our locals that were in that campground, some of whose children have been traumatized by this incident, and not one person, not one, has been contacted. And you stood here before me two weeks ago, and you told me that Internal Affairs was going to come, and that you told our community that they were going to be contacting people, and I sent you their contact information. Not one person has been contacted. And that pains me, because I stood up for the sheriff's department as a leader in this community, saying, "Give them a chance. They are doing everything that they can. They have assured us that they have everybody that they possibly could involved in an animal shooting, which is unprecedented." That's basically what you've told me, and I believed in that. But I'm disappointed, because lots of times, people just want to be heard. People want to share their grief, that they witnessed this experience, they want to feel that, that you, they are, something is going to happen. It doesn't mean that they're going to tar and feather this person who may or may not have made, you know, obviously, a bad decision, but people want to be heard. And that's partially what the concern is with the sheriff's department, is whether or not all the calls are being answered to, or whether or not, you know, an arrest is made. For me, it's not necessarily that every time you go on a call that you make an arrest, it's that people are feeling as though they have a sense of safety in this community. So I'm frustrated about the bison incident, which is the first time that I'm really going to stand before you and show you how frustrated that I am with the sheriff's department.
Can I address that?
Second to that, what we talked about in our last meeting, and what we heard from many members of the community, and I'm asking those members who haven't spoken to speak up on this, is that there needs to be consequences. It doesn't necessarily mean that if you're, have a child not in a car seat, that you're going to have CPS called, and this child's going to be taken away. It means that there needs to be consequences, that there needs to be reminders. I agree to that. There needs to be, if you're pulling over the same people three times, saying, "Hey, you've got a two-year-old child that needs to be in a car seat, I'm now going to give you a citation for the third time you've been pulled over." If we have such a limited number of sheriff's deputies in this town, we know who's been pulled over, we know who's been talked to, or you guys should already know that. But the, there has to be consequences for behaviors. We have these laws on the books. And I agree with Joe that, no, I don't want to see six kids being pulled over, thrown over the hood of a vehicle, but you know what? I darn well want to see you detain those kids and have their parents called. I want to see, when you go out to the casino and you're seeing underage drinking, I want the alcohol pulled, I want the parents called. Let the parents have some responsibility in helping to train and teach their kids the right from wrong. If you want to let an underage kid drink, let them do it in your own home. They don't need to be out in public, they don't need to be creating situations, you know, that affect other people. The speeding, safety, kids, curfew, drugs, we have all these laws. We need to let a few people go to court, and when you start maybe writing a few citations, or when you start showing that there are consequences for behavior, that is going to run rampant through this community. And you know what? Some of this stuff is going to slow... Some of this stuff is going to slowly start to decrease because it's an imposition to go over town. It's an imposition to go to court. It's embarrassing to go, for here, it's embarrassing to go to court because every single person that drives down Sumner knows you're possibly in trouble when you're outside of the courthouse. So those, those consequences, there needs to be consequences. We can't just keep turning a blind eye even though we think that's my good buddy over there. I, you know, I really don't want them to have a ticket, but on, you know, the second or the third reminder, ticket them. I mean, and those are, those are my philosophies.
And I think, I think we're all agreeing with that.
Sure. We, we, we can do that and we will start right away. No problem at all. And if I could talk to...
Talk to the bison, though.
Okay, let me talk about the bison thing, okay? Internal Affairs, when they do an investigation, they don't just run out and start interviewing people. Last Tuesday, I had Internal Affairs on the interior of the island, two investigators, two sergeants. I was out there for about seven hours with them. We went to the first shooting that happened on April 18th down by White's Landing. We went to the second shooting that happened at Little Harbor on August 18th. During that time period, I took them around, they made, took measurements on how wide the roads were, they took measurements and photos of where the campers were at. They did all this stuff to prepare documents so when they go and do interview the witnesses, they can say, show us exactly where you were. Oh, well, we measured that, that, that road, the, the dirt road. We know it's whatever, 20 feet. So we know you were 20 feet away. That was on Tuesday. On Thursday, I took a shooting team that our department does not have shooting teams for animal shootings. Uh, there was two, there was four, five, six people in the shooting team. Same thing, six hours out there I was with them. I took them to both places because the shooting team is separate from Internal Affairs. The shooting team deals with training, why the deputy actually shot the bison. Internal Affairs deals with discipline. Did the deputy violate any Sheriff's Department policies? Okay? I got an email today from Internal Affairs Bureau saying, I called some of the people. I have it scheduled for October 5th and 6th. Can they come and interview me on the 5th? And while they're here, they'll start interviewing people. Normally, when Internal Affairs comes out and starts interviewing people, and I don't want to give an exact time, maybe three months, four months, because they're getting all the information first. The last thing they do after they collect the scene stuff is start interviewing people. So I, I respectfully disagree because I'm doing everything possible and they are, they are...
I'm not suggesting that you're not doing everything that you can, but I just want to make the point, and this is a crude point to make, but if I walked over here right now and I punched Annie in the arm, I guarantee you that somebody from the Sheriff's Department is going to talk to every single person in this room, review the camera, well within three months' time. And that's what I'm saying is frustrating, that, that you, you can't call the direct witnesses, people whose kids have been traumatized by this. There, there just appears to be no interest in the well-being of the people that had to participate.
You did welcome...
Yes, ma'am. I understand your frustration.
You did welcome people to be interviewed though, right? I mean, you did invite the witnesses to come and talk to you.
At the last council meeting?
At the last council meeting, I believe, right?
We got zero. I got my witnesses from, uh, Council, Cindy from Kansas City.
Yeah, I've, I've gotten some complaints too from people that were out there that were traumatized as well. Um, I'm glad you made some really super good points because there were some kids out there and they were traumatized. They actually, there were some people thought there was an active shooter going around at the camp shooting people. That's something that maybe the sheriffs can deal with. Um, I don't know at this point, the parents are probably so frustrated that they probably don't want the sheriffs anywhere near them, but I'll tell you one thing, you got a lot of witnesses that were out there that saw people walking around with guns, Bruce, for, for instance, or whoever the sheriff was for that matter, um, uh, chasing a buffalo around, putting slugs in him, and it just, that, that whole scene was not right. So, um, I don't know how you're going to deal with it, but there are people that are traumatized in the community by it. So, um, we've got to try to prevent that from happening again. That was a terrible thing. And luckily, people are pretty resilient in this town, but they're still pretty pissed off at us and at you guys for what you've done and, and what you haven't done. I don't care what Internal Investigate, Internal Affairs comes up with at this point, or your investigators. There was, there was bullets going spraying around that campsite that night, and nobody knows where those shells are at. They don't, they don't know where those slugs are at. The, the buffalo's been buried, so you never find out where those slugs went, which direction they went in, except if you interview these people. Um, some of them know which direction, but still, there's the ricochet factor, whether or not the sheriff actually hit the animal with all the slugs and, um...
And you know, sir, that is why I went straight to the sheriff's office personally and requested this investigation to be done.
Maybe you can let them know that there was, there's, there's some concerns on the city council that there's, there was some, um, um, people that were traumatized and now what, what, and the city council was asking questions about now, what do we do with our citizens that were hurt by this incident?
And even that night, I, and not to get into all the details of the incident, but even that night, I knew about the two children that were, uh, in the, the trailer, the camp, camp trailer. And I personally, in the middle of that night, went into that trailer at the request of the mother, I believe it was the mother, female, and the two kids were sitting there eating spaghetti or whatever it was in their little bowls, and I talked to them that night to try to ease their, because I knew they were, they were nervous. I was nervous. I mean, there, there was a deputy shooting.
Yeah, the mother was probably more traumatized too, just by the whole thing, because nobody knew where those, where those gunshots were coming from. So...
Yeah, I, I understand the, the council's concern.
She made some great points, and you know what? We can, we can deal with that. You, you can, you got, you've got the sentiments of the councilman and the, the councilwoman and, and, um, I think it's, there's some legitimate beefs there. So I'll, I'll let you deal with that as, as we go forward. It's a very complicated thing. I understand and, um, but I think there's a lot of good things happening here, but there's a few things that, obviously, there's been some complaints in the community. So...
Mayor.
I've, I've got my point of view and about some things and, and everybody's got. We all represent different people in the community who resonate their concerns to us. So they're all valid complaints, I think.
I understand that there was a manifest of all people who were in the campgrounds and I, and the captain can correct me or not, because I think one of you may have even told, or someone told me that. So I called, um, the party that had the, the manifest, uh, had a name, I don't remember the name, but I, I wouldn't mention it, and said, would you not release it to me, but would you release it to the Sheriff's Department? The answer was, given to me, was, well, I would need permission to do that. My understanding is that a request was made and that it was refused to give the manifest so they could, of those people who were in the campground at the time. Now, there may be good reason for that. So, but without a subpoena, I guess.
Subpoena or a search warrant.
Since this is not a criminal matter.
On Tuesday, when I took, uh, Internal Affairs Bureau over there, we drove to Two Harbors and we tried to get that manifest so we could interview everybody that was there, whether they witnessed or not. They will only give it to us if we get a subpoena or a search warrant. They said that's what their legal representation requires. Well, for, uh, law, you cannot get a search warrant unless you have a criminal investigation. And the investigation that's being done is a policy violation if the deputy violated our shooting policy because it was an animal. That's, so that's why they wouldn't give it to you.
What about the subpoena?
Same thing. They do not, Internal Affairs does not have subpoena powers to be able to subpoena.
What, what, how do you turn this into a criminal? Is this, it'll never be a criminal investigation? I mean, or it's just not that kind of a thing?
It's not that kind of investigation based on it being an animal.
I've never heard the police, policing the police, um, come up with, um, two severe consequences for the sheriffs who, who are in the wrongdoing. So, you know, that's why I've stated to you before that I'm a big, um, um, advocate about police abuse. Um, I don't, I don't believe these were intended. Um, this, um, what was happening that night was intended. I think somehow somebody lost their marbles there. Um, they didn't, they didn't do things correctly. I'm sure that wasn't to policy, but, um, I've never heard of, uh, the police finding one of their subordinates guilty of anything. I mean, not, not much. I mean, uh...
Well, I, I can tell you, sir, there's Police Officer Bill of Rights that keeps me from giving specifics, but the deputy was found guilty during the first bison shooting. I can't, I can't tell the public what the discipline was, but there was discipline issued for that.
And Jay, we've got JJ right behind you.
Just one thing real quick. I mean, this was tragic and scary for everybody. However, the Sheriff's Department, along with the Fire Department, have a stress team that can come in and talk to kids and talk to, um, families and, and help them understand what had transpired. Um, they don't judge, they don't, they don't care about what happened. All they care about is the kids and the, um, and the individuals that are so traumatized. And this might be a good opportunity to maybe make a couple of phone calls and say, hey, get the people together, let's bring in a, a team in and talk, and talk to the kids and talk to the parents because we've all been in stressful situations and, you know, and I had one guy explain it to me from the LA County Fire Department saying, throughout our lives, our cups are really full. And then when this, something like this happens, there's no room to put nothing. So everything just stays in there.
Does that usually happen directly after the, the incident?
No, not at all.
It's been weeks, so we can still apply this?
Yeah, not at all. I mean, anytime, anytime that they can get together and, um, and, you know, people tend to process things different. Kids really do, uh, process things different. And what we assume is, is they're having trouble is maybe their normal way of processing. All these people do is say, they come in and they talk to them about the situation. What did, what did you interpret? So it might be something.
That's a great suggestion. I didn't know we had that avenue. That'd be nice if we could set that up for these...
Just a thought, but it, it, it really makes a big difference. Just like any other, um, uh, shooting on the mainland, a, a police officer involved in a, a, a shooting a person and people see it, they all, they all get, you know, amped up. So anyway, that's just one thought. Okay.
Cool. Thanks. That's good input.
And that's a very good thought, and thank you very much.
What's it, what's the agency called? It's called?
Uh, well, we have it through the Sheriff's Department. It's through our chaplains. It's Counseling Service. And, uh, by all means, we could, uh, bring them over.
Good. Okay. We're gonna move right along. I want to go back to the drinking and driving thing that you discussed. Do we want to set up speed bombs or speed checks?
DUI checkpoints.
DUI. I, I really don't think we need to do that. However, we've been, it seems like we've had a few fights lately. There's a couple of, some, you know, bad juju in the air. I don't know what's going on. I don't know.
Alcohol.
Exactly. Okay. And I don't know what time of day they start, but I remember years ago, we had that incident, that picnic fight, that had officers been there, this is waiting for you, but had officers been there, that wouldn't have escalated to what it became. And we, you know when people, you know when jails closes, you know when the Marlin Club closes. And just even walking, because like all the people across the Marlin Club, they get in their vehicles that are parked at Vons, they drive home. And just to say, hey, Ollie, you know, how you doing? You know, maybe, why don't you give me your keys? Or, you know, just, just talk to them a little bit. I mean, we've only had one alcohol fatality when I first got here on New Year's Eve or something, alcohol-related, but, uh, with two vehicles. But it, but to avoid that or somebody going over the side or whatever. A lot of these vacation rentals now seem to be giving vehicles, they, these people are getting golf carts now. And if they're some of the ones that are in there and they're driving on streets, they don't know. I mean, it's just, I just think it's that visibility. And when you have those three, like, I don't know what time those guys go to bed, but when you got those three guys, one takes Catalina, one takes Sumner, I mean, it's...
They're old.
Well, they are old. I noticed that.
If they can't do the job, they shouldn't be here.
Right. They need to be here when we need them.
Yeah. And like I said, by all means, in the future, they will be separated.
And then so that, so the drinking and driving again, you don't need to do a checkpoint necessarily, but, but...
Spot checks.
Yeah, make them aware that you see them. Same thing with the drugs, the people on, with drugs. I think there's been lists, their names given to you and whatever. And I don't know how difficult it is to say, Ollie, I'm watching you.
No problem.
Something to just let them know instead of, they're getting, they, they're really getting away with a lot right now. And so, um, I think a little more assertive, we know who you are, you know? Um, I, I don't know, you've done a little couple busts lately. I don't have any idea that we'll read about them in our, at least in our police report. But, um, that doesn't, without keeping to have apologized because you don't have enough staff, um, it just, I think those are, those are some of the big issues.
Okay, and I understand. And thank you very much for bringing those up. One thing is, uh, I believe it was two weeks ago, I, somebody brought information to me that a person was under the influence, using drugs, possibly selling drugs. Uh, subsequently, she was arrested. It was put in the newspaper. I don't hear anything about that. I don't hear great. I just hear, hey, there's more people.
Well, we shouldn't have to. It's kind of like the Fire Department. They put out a fire. That's what they're hired to do. You're law enforcement, that's what you're hired to do. So every time you do something, we shouldn't go, you know, we shouldn't have to do that.
No, I understand. But then, a couple days ago, I was given five other names of people. And I don't want to give out what we're planning to do.
Of course not.
But we are taking it very seriously. And that's what community-oriented policing is. The community telling us what they want. In the very near future, I brought it up before, I'm going to start a CAC, Community Advisory Committee. And I've had some people give their names that they're interested in being part of this, trying to wait till the summer's over. Now it's over. We're going to be getting a group of five to 10 people together, and we're going to listen to them, the community, what they want us to do.
Right.
And that's it.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Right back.
Hello. My name is Enrique Dominguez. I pastor at Singing Waters Christian Center, but I also coach high school football. I work with, uh, choices. I speak to the kids at school. I'm involved with a lot of youth-oriented activity. I came here 31 years ago to start the teen center, which is at Avalon Community Church. The reason I came 31 years ago is because of the fact that they had a drug and alcohol problem among our youth. I came here 31 years ago for that reason. So we started the teen center. We try to provide a safe place for kids to go to so they did not have the pressure of falling into drugs and alcohol. I ended up a couple years ago, no, about a year ago, I was talking to one of my high school football players, and we were talking about the issue and the struggle that this young man had with drugs and alcohol. And I asked this kid, I said, well, who's, who's your dad? And he mentioned his dad. And it just devastated me because that was one of the kids that I had when I was working there 31 years ago. And I looked at him and I thought in my mind, I have wasted 30 years of my life here. I was devastated because I felt like there was no impact being made because this had passed from one generation to the next. And so I was down for a couple days and just, just didn't know what to do. And at that point, then I just knew, this has to end. This has to change. And so it was about a year ago, I started to work on different, work with different people, meet with different people, to ask them questions and ask them, what is a strategy that we have for our kids? I'm speaking specifically to the kids, about the kids. And so, so I've been involved with not only the sports, I've been involved with school, I've been involved with various things. But here's the thing, is that if there is no enforcement of law, then there's no fear for the kids. If there is not a process on, for the kids to know that, okay, it's been like this, the, this is the spirit of the law, and this is the letter of the law. If we have been walking and dabbling in the spirit of the law for a long time, and which we have, there was a season where we were letter of the law, and that's where we had a lot of issues, as you addressed, Joe. I, I recognize that. I wasn't here during that time, um, but I heard about it. And so you had police officers that came down hard and they rode everyone up. I got that. And so then we brought some other people that went, took us over here on this side. And so my concern is, when do we make the transition from the spirit of the law to the letter of the law? Is there a process that we're going to have? Because if we're going to ask the question, we're going to ask him to, to enforce certain laws, we're going to need to give him a process. And so for our kids... And so, for our kids, we don't have to write them up, bust them, throw them in jail, give them, you know, a future that's going to impair their possibility of going to college and so on, so forth. But we need to give them a process. They need to know that if, there are consequences. The first time, maybe you get the warning, you go to counseling, you have some community service, maybe you pay a fine. The second time, you get more counseling, more community service, a bigger fine. The third time, now you get written up. You know that there's a process. For example, for me, I know that at my, on my street, every Tuesday, I cannot park my golf cart on that side of the street. It doesn't matter who I am, it doesn't matter how I live, it, all that matters is if I have my car on that side of the street, I'm going to get written up. So, I will make sure that my car is on this side. And on Thursday, my car has to be on that side. There are consequences to that. Irrespective of my opinion, irrespective of what I would like, it would be easy for me to leave my car there. But the bottom line is that they have to clean the street, and so my car needs to be moved to the other side. So, there are consequences for my behavior. And so, I don't like paying fines. I don't mind that we, I help support us keeping our lights on in here in this room, but I don't like to pay that fine. But I know that I must get up, and I need to move that car. I know that our kids, if we give them a standard, they will rise up. In our high school football team, we have had to remove numerous kids from our football team because of their continued drug use. And what that did was, yes, it lowered the quality of our sport, of our game, of our possibility of winning because we lost some great kids, great athletes. But the bottom line is, we had to set the standard, someone had to. And so, now we don't have the drama that we're working with our kids. We enjoy coming to practice, working with our kids. We, hopefully, we, we would love to win. But the bottom line is, we had to set something down. Our kids had to know that there is a consequence for this type of behavior. And to play football is not just your, it's not a right, it's a privilege. And it's a blessing for us to live in this beautiful community. But if we can set a process that he can hold to, and he knows, all he wants is information. He just wants to know what we want. And he has heard the, he has heard both sides. He has heard what happened years ago, and how horrible it was for many people in this community. He heard that. He's also heard the other side that says, "But there's not enough." And all he's asking for is, "So, what would you like?" Let us come up with a process for every single thing. It's gonna take a while. We've been over here for a long time. I think it's time to start the process. And I think that if we can put together groups of people, and we can start to address the, the, my, the, the major issues right now that we're dealing with, start with them, and then work our way out to the minors. I think if we did that, things would change. Because I know it's in us. I know we have the potential. This is a great city, I want to see this become an incredibly great city, where we would have a waiting list of people over town wanting to come here to this island because it's awesome. And so, the issue here that we're dealing with is what's our future gonna look like? And I deal with a lot of kids that are going to have a future here on this island. They're going to come back, or they're not going to leave at all. And what are they gonna look like in 10 or 15 years? Because I've had to deal with some of these kids, and their hard issues, and I find out that their parents are parents that I've known over the years. This has to change. It has to change. And so, I know that we can. And so, I just encourage each one of you, think about the process. Let's work together, and let's make this thing happen. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. And processes, uh...
Kind of feel like my dad tonight. He's talking up here all the time. Anyway, I just, that, very well said, and he said something that was really rang true to me about working, the Sheriff's Department, working with the school too, to say things, because you tell a kid, "Hey, I heard you were doing something inappropriate, you're out this game," or whatever. But the thing I really wanted to say was, um, I've heard a lot about presence, and the last time we had this discussion, the first go-around, um, we talked about, maybe they need more law enforcement, maybe we need another sheriff here. Not just the ones that come for busy weekends, but all the time. So, I don't know what that entails, because I think it is about presence. I mean, I, I don't see people out, and I don't see people doing things. I also don't think, um, it's a bad idea to do checkpoints, but I'm not talking about just for alcohol, and you'd have to move it, you know, you'd have to stay in one place 10 minutes, and then you'd have to move the checkpoint because it'll be on the cell phone and everyone will know in five minutes. But why can't you do that with children in car seats as well? You know, stop people at certain places, and if the kids aren't belted, this is a warning. But, but I agree with you, it's, it's somewhere between the spirit and the letter, so, but I think just the presence of the police. Then in my sister's town, they did an interesting thing, people speeding in residential areas, that was their problem. So, what they did was, they took retired vehicles, police vehicles, and they parked them there. And it, they, just the presence of the vehicle stopped it, and I know we have plenty of police vehicles here, so maybe parking a, a police vehicle on Pebly Beach with no one in it for a while would slow people down for a little bit. And whether it stayed there all the time, it, it was very effective for them. And then there was one, oh, and then dogs on the front street. So, that's, as you know, and I know, it's really code enforcement. I never, I have never seen a code enforcement officer on the front street, and they're the people that you direct. So, to me, they need to get out of their cars and walk the front street from now on again, because there are many laws, today doing a tour, at least 10 dogs on the front street, people smoking, every, you know, all the things that are posted on either end of the street that say, "Don't do that, it's all happening." And then I was just gonna say again, that, um, when I see people with dogs, because sometimes I'm noxious, not when I'm taking, giving a tour or anything, but I ask people, "Oh, is that a therapy dog?" Because a service dog is highly recognizable. It's a trained dog, a service dog would never lift their leg. They're, they are, they go on command. So, and they invariably answer, "Yes." And I say, "Well, even though this is a therapy dog, they are still required to follow the law of our city." And I will, and I say this, though it's not true, um, they, if they catch you here, you will be cited. I'm just want to give you that heads up." And then I move on. So, I don't know, that's just a tactic, but I do think that we just need to work together as a team, and that code enforcement needs to be on the front street, and presence of the police need to be on the front street, and then we as citizens of Avalon need to follow the rules too.
Mayor, may I just mention that the City Council recognized the need for an additional code enforcement officer? They did authorize, we are now recruiting for that position, and, and, and I will say that, that in, in my experience, it's just that there's more things to do. They work very hard.
Oh, I know.
And, but, but adding this, this third officer is going to help the situation so that Ms. Ratti can schedule them.
But I hope you change the parameters. Dr. Danny and I spoke about this today, because the last advertisement that went out for the code enforcement said nights, weekends, and holidays. I, you know, I don't know if that's gonna be a real... Well, the last time that you put out for a code enforcement, it said, um, that the position was for nights, weekends, and holidays.
Well, I think it's, it's a full-time position, so it can be assigned as, as, as is determined necessary by...
Right, so, but I was just saying, usually you split the misery up, that's how, but anyway.
Yeah, no, good point though, thank you.
Okay, there's some people behind you.
Long evening here. Thank you for everything that you're doing here. Obviously, I really believe the more that we get together on the issues that we face, the more solution that we have. And there are a lot of parents in our community, or, there are some parents in our community who obviously need some help and probably want some help, and then there are those that don't. And they don't know what to do, that's just the way it is, and so, they continue to have no input in their kids' lives. But, um, you know, as far as, and the reason I'm saying that is because, um, you know, as you were saying, Councilman Sampson, you know, that, that your child is, is doing good, and I'm super glad about that. And there, and that's because you're present, and you're a good father. And, uh, and that is one of our things in this community, is trying to get in information and support to our parents that we desperately need to try to do, and we try to do that for them. But one of the things that I actually did, and last time I came up here and asked if we could bring this back up into focus again to talk about it, I went out and I made a little petition to go door, or actually, I went out, started at the end of town, and I only got to Vons', and then partially through the street. But, um, so I only got 120 signatures on this, but what it says, is that I am unable to attend the City Council meeting on Tuesday, September 19th, but I'm very concerned about the enforcement of our local laws, especially as it, as it pertains to our town's "my child." And I, we put "my child" so that there's accountability in this, what they're saying. "If youth are participating in destructive illegal activities, including but not limiting to the drinking, alcohol, and/or using illegal or prescription drugs, I hope law enforcement individuals would carry out appropriate legal procedures, showing our children that there are consequences for making bad, dangerous decisions." And so, like I said, I only, I only was able to get 120 signatures here, and the reason was, is because there were so many things that came up, and people saying, "What do we do?" I'm not, um, I'm not a law official, I'm not a teacher, I'm not any of that, and yet people, and I'm sure here in our audience, people come to you and say, "What do we do about our children?" One of the things that I think our, our community is crying out for, and I think we might have had a little bit more people in here, but there was a back-to-school night, and I was actually gonna try to get there to get some more signatures, but this started at 5:00, so, uh, here I am, and just trying to do that. But what I'm trying to do here in this community is bring us together. I believe that we do have a captain here that wants to work with us, and I think that we can come to a common bond here to try and help support our kids. I don't want to see anybody in jail, you know, especially our young people. I don't want to see them with some kind of rap. We know what that's like, it could, I mean, we've been in situations where we've made a lot of bad decisions and it didn't taint us, but on the other hand, we can't allow things to happen where the few could influence the other kids. And, um, and I say that very gracefully, because, um, there is a lot of movement. If we don't come to some kind of balance here, we're gonna end up with, the kids are gonna think they can run this town. And that's because they believe that there is no, there is no, um, you know, there's no consequences. Going out, you know, as far as down at the casino and things like that, you know, um, there are kids that are out there all the time, making, we've had stabbings, we've had fights, we've had people, young people in the emergency rooms, because of that, what's going on there. And so, you know, it's, how, how much more do we want? We've seen a couple deaths from overdoses in the past years and other activities. So, you know, we definitely need to come up with a solution. I know Catalina Choices definitely wants to be a part of, coming up with a program, which we had, we talked with Mr. Federal last time, what, last year? Anyway, and we came up with a, a solution, and we saw it work. We saw it work. If you can help one kid, if there's two kids and you can help one out of two for any kind of drug kind of related in decisions, you're making a huge impact. We had that the first time that we put it into happening. It was a complete success. The parents ended up, the parent and the kid, the last session, got together and they were hugging each other and thanking me, which is what you do, even if it doesn't come out good. This is what you do to provide information and education, because they'd been brought back together. The first thing that drug use or alcohol use usually brings into a family is separation. And that is what all of our kids want to be with their families, they want to be with their parents or guardians, and that's the first thing that's taken away from them during this process. So, um, you know, I am obviously here for this many, I wish I could have gotten more, but, um, I told you that I would be here and I would try to do everything I could do to get people here. And so, you know that I am here to support, just to let you know that we are trying, Choices is trying, we have another Red Ribbon Week, and the thing is, is that it does take money to do these things, you know? Red Ribbon Week, to me, is like kind of a slap in the face, because we have a, I believe, a very close to serious problem that could continue if we don't address it. And so, Red Ribbon Week, we do have speakers coming out. We listened to the kids last year in our peer mediation, and we asked them, "What would help you be better peer mediators?" And basically, they're the kids that kind of move the school and, and are positive and trying to do things, committing to being kind on campus. And we listened to them last year, and so this year, we're bringing in special guest speakers. Last year, we brought in an NFL player, you know, and shied away from a different type. We're trying to do anything that we can. This year, we have some young people coming in, we have a luncheon every, when we bring them in, we have a special, the special group to be able to have a special luncheon to speak to them one-on-one. So, it's more being able to hold on to what they're saying. We have information, education that we use this building for, to get parents in here, to try and give them education. I'm to the point right now, and this is what I've committed to, is that I've racked my brain, how do we get people to show up into, you know, a situation where we need everybody to come together to keep our young people and our community healthy? And, uh, you know, for, what I came up with is that I'm going, I've already started to ask groups of people if they would invite people into their home, 15, or 10 to 15 people, whatever, and I will personally provide them with education, some information, they can ask questions, because I don't know how else to do it here. You know, I don't know what the solution is except for, until we have the top of the pyramid, which is our law enforcement, we have no strength. When I sit down with the kids in early intervention, the first thing that we go over, it says "laws and consequences." And I tell you, the first thing they say to me is, "Why do I have to worry about that? Why do we have to go through that?" Because there's laws and consequences. Oh, no, there's not. And I'm not saying that to be mean. I, it's an awareness that's happening here, and we can't ignore this. So, you know, solution, I'm on board. You know, let's get a process, let's, you know, get together here, let's get, you know, we, we, I talked to the vice principal just the other day about, now that we have a lot of our PE classes together, can we do, you know, some drug, or training for them for prevention? You know, we can't hardly get in the school. When Michelle was talking about going into the schools, we don't, they don't give us enough time because they don't have enough time. There's not time unless you're a prevention school. And that's a huge, huge outlook of what's happening there. So, the solution, we're all trying to come up with this, but I do know one thing, is that we have got to have consequences, and we have to work with what we need to do. The bar needs to be raised. When I work with the probation department over town, this is how it goes. If that, if your person who's on probation is testing clean and being compliant with the program that they're in, then they are allowed to not go over town and spend that money. If they're not compliant, if they're testing dirty, if they're not doing what they need to do in the early intervention program, they have to go over and test over there. We're trying to do everything we can, but we really need support with more consequences in a positive way that we can work with here, so that we really, I mean, I found a baggie the other day in my, on 9/11, walking my dog. It said, "A little bag of magic." It was about this big, "Little bag of magic." That's what it said on it, and I thought, "That's weird." Picked it up, little canvas bag, I opened it up, and there was a syringe in there. I'm scared. I've heard about a lot of methamphetamine here, I've heard a lot of, a lot about different other drugs that are serious prescription drugs. Just because we're not dying here doesn't mean it can't happen to us. And it can happen fast with young people, because they definitely, you know, they're starting early here. I've had kindergartners, I've talked with kindergartners. So, I'm not trying to panic anybody, but I am pleading with you that let's get some sort of solution here that is consistent, it's consistent for every kid, so that they can be safe and that our community can be safe too, and we'll have direction.
Thank you, that was very good, and very passionate as well.
Leslie Warner, it's hard to top the last few speakers, and I'm not trying to. The thing that keeps coming into my head is, in parenting, they always say, "Say what you mean, and mean what you say." JJ can tell us in the harbor, the die doesn't lie, you say it. You say it. You put that dye in there, you get caught, you're out. So I encourage you to not think about too many warnings. I'm not in favor of a lot of warnings. Somebody speeding, they're speeding. Somebody doesn't have their little baby in a car seat, how many warnings do they need? What does it take? So please, even perhaps having sheriff presence at the school in the morning, when all these kids are being driven to school, when all these bicycles are coming up with no helmets on their little heads, please start with some easy stuff to work on that shows we mean what we say, and that follows through all the way to drug and alcohol. Thank you.
Very nicely said, very well said. Yeah.
I was just going to help mitigate the problem here. I was just thinking of just, maybe just training, if it's, if you repeat things over and over again, people are going to finally get the point. But the school should already have a program. I'm not very familiar with what's going on too much around town, that's why I came to the meeting. But schools should usually just have a program with drug and alcohol, and also seatbelts, driving safety. So even if a parent's not doing their job, the kids should be the moral pants in the house and say, "Hey, you know, why don't you have your seatbelt on, put mine on." I was like that as a kid, and, I mean, that's one of the easiest things that you can do. It's kind of like, you can even make it a game, be like, "Hey, I got my seatbelt on, but you don't," and put it on, something like that. But even with the drugs and alcohol, even for the adults, I was thinking over at the, I guess there's a theater over here at the casino, maybe show like a training presentation on around, on or around holidays, so that way, like, you know, most people go out on a holiday weekend, so there could be high crime or high DUIs or anything like that, so make sure that you don't do that around that time. And just have like a presentation maybe over at the theater, which is, you know, for the adults or families and whatnot, and then just have training maybe once a week out of school, have a speaker or whatnot come in. And there's a lot of people that are willing to speak and, you know, train other youth too, as well, and adults. So I was just thinking of something like that. And then for disciplinary action, community service looks great for people, teaches them how to stop doing the bad stuff that they're doing, actually occupy their time, teach them self-discipline, how to be somewhere on time, and just basic stuff, and that should actually distract them from what they're doing. I mean, community service is a great opportunity for both ends of the party. But that's all I have to say for, oh, one more thing. I was going to say, I've looked at all the parks here, and I was thinking maybe to mitigate the dog problem, maybe there could be a dog beach, like a portion section off, because I lived in Daytona Beach, I was going to flight school down there, and I have a bird dog that likes to run a lot and swim also. So I had to find a beach there, that, because I got scolded before, I was like, "Hey, you can't bring your dog here," so I didn't know. So I looked for a dog beach, and they have a sectioned-off park for dogs.
And do you have your dog with you now?
No, I don't. My older sister, she has autism, and she kind of like took over my dog on me.
Typically, the people are, people swim their dogs between the tuna club and the yacht club. So that's the swim beach kind of for the dogs?
We kind of call that dog beach.
Okay, but it's not really actually designated that way, so maybe, I mean, if it was, maybe it would actually deter people away from there, maybe more over there to walk their dogs in a different course, I guess.
Well, we're trying to work, we're working on a real dog park, but that's where the swimmers are going though, right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I hope that was helpful.
And then it looks like you can submit your name to Rhonda and Enrique, and maybe you can help volunteer, because, do you have some time?
I have pretty much all the time in the world now.
Okay.
I do have a lot of time.
Community can use your help.
Yeah, you're a young person, a lot of times, young people can, that relationship is better. Okay, you're going to say you're older than you look, but whatever you are, you look a lot younger than me.
Thank you, thank you.
So, that younger perspective and talking like a young person is always.
Yes, thank you.
There are all the different issues. I think Enrique hit the nail on the head, and I know when we talked before, that whole thing about process. And I don't know if it's important to get a Rhonda and an Enrique and the captain, and I don't know if even somebody like Joe is interested, to develop that process. I mean, I think any of us are willing to sit in and help and put in our two cents, but I think that whole thing with, you know what the programs are, you know how the county works on the other side, so when things get serious, you know, and you all know where the gaps are as well. So, maybe that could be the group that gets the process together, and when you're all are comfortable with those consequences, then you just say, "Hey, and this is kind of what it is," because then that needs to be posted, that needs to be out there, so the community, through the schools and whatever, this is what we're doing, at least with the minors for now. This is our goal, and this is what we're working on. I don't know how that sounds, comments?
I think that's great as far as coming up with the consequences and also plan of action for our youth specifically, because one of the things that we talk about, and we talked about this all for a year and a half when we were meeting as a community group, was about, you know, you don't want to ruin, a young person makes a mistake, you don't want to ruin the rest of their opportunities down the road. They need some education, they need some other avenues, they need some consequences to go with the actions, but that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be the consequences that the law lays out. So, I think that's one thing, setting aside the youth, and I would certainly love to continue the conversations that we've already had, and welcome Joe to join in as well.
Absolutely.
But when it comes to the, separate the youth and what we hope to do in the mentoring programs that we've talked about, all of that, separate that. As far as the adult aspect of it, you know, Leslie might be on to something. I'm definitely a believer in, you know, you make a mistake, you get a warning, you make a mistake again, and you know what? You need a ticket. If you're going to speed down Pebbley Beach Road, if you're going to endanger people, if you're, you know, going to be getting in fights after the bars, if you're going to drink too much and be a public nuisance, you know, maybe there's some consequences. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, if you are going to get an infraction for drunk in public, it doesn't necessarily mean that when you go to court, they're going to throw the book at you. But by golly, you need to go to court and you need to work it out, because it's obviously a problem. You're obviously creating a nuisance for others in town. And again, that will go rampant. It doesn't, it doesn't need to be every single person that's intoxicated in town, you're writing them up and sending them to court, but there's known offenders, there's, you know, known situations. So, I would like to see, I would like to see some, our laws followed in town respectfully, and then work on these processes and how we work with the youth is a whole separate, is a whole separate scenario.
I think, yeah, Enrique kind of hit it on the head. He's got a lot of experience in it, and he's seen the generations and what goes on and what has gone on, and that's a good plan of action. I like it.
Then there would be a report, some kind of recommendations back to the council.
Absolutely.
So that way you could.
That's how it gets communicated to people, what's going to happen. Yes, it's not okay to not use your car seat. Yes, it's not okay to go out and get drunk and get in a fight. Yes, it's not okay to speed on Pebbley Beach Road or down Marilla or down Whitley or any street that happens.
But that's my point, is that those are laws on the books. Those aren't things that we have to go and say, "Hey, you know what? Guess what? You got to have your one-and-a-half-year-old in a car seat." I'm sorry, but that's common sense.
But you know what, but they sell, they sell golf carts without car seats. And so maybe we.
You mean without seatbelts?
I mean without seatbelts, yeah, sorry. Yeah, without seatbelts. And, but I think whatever she was talking about, going up to school, that visibility there and stop those people and just, "Dit, dit, dit, car seat." You do that once a week for a couple weeks, and after that, I mean, because they can't be there every morning, every school morning, I'm sure, but, you know, spot check once a week for a couple weeks.
I liked Paula's idea of setting a police car on Pebbley Beach Road.
Well, that's what happens with Edison trucks, because those Edison Jeeps look just like the cup, and I see one of those and I slow down.
That would definitely slow somebody down.
In my little golf cart. No, but I mean, it's a deterrent.
I guess I would ask for the lieutenant, does that feel like we've given the good enough direction? I mean, we've got like six more things we got to do tonight, so we do need to move on. But have we given enough direction for moving forward?
You've brought up some very good points. I'll take it back to the department, I'll make sure that it is, that all of them are addressed, and we will be doing more enforcement. That's no problem at all.
And I believe, okay, and I don't know how long it's going to take the group to work on process, but I don't think that means that we've got to, if it takes a month, I don't mean that, I don't think that means we don't do anything for a month. I think you still need to go.
No, I understand, it'll be, yeah, we will get right on that. Not a problem at all.
And just the reinforcement that Captain Federal used to come into the bars right before they were closing and say, "Hey, any of you guys need a ride home? If you're thinking about drinking and driving, don't even think about it." They used to be outside, and when somebody get in a golf cart, I've seen some of your deputies go up to somebody and go, "Hey, where are you going?" And just have a talk with them and say, "Don't even think about it, just get out and walk home. And, how about I give you a ride? Come on, let me give you a ride." But anyway, I want to reinforce.
You give people rides all the time.
You guys have been doing that kind of stuff, and I appreciate it, and, you know, but when somebody gets out of line, you know, and violent or mean, then, you know, there's different consequences there. But I think we had a good conversation tonight, and this is what changes the things, like for Rhonda and Enrique, is changes will be made now, good changes, changes that are going to affect the community in a positive way, but you know what? It just, it takes some conversation and some working through it. And a lieutenant that's aware of the concerns of the community that comes up and brings these issues to the table and allows us to talk to them, because he's got the education and the ability to make this happen for us, so.
I have 29 years on the Sheriff's Department. I've worked from South LA Sheriff's Station, Carson Sheriff's Station, handled drive-by shootings, I handled all kinds of stuff, and I can do the same here.
Wonderful.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, community, for all of your input and support.
Great input.
Okay, item number 12.
Yes, item number 12 is an amendment to your ordinance regarding single-room occupancies. This was inspired by a recent entitlement involving a, that allowed some old apartment buildings to be converted to single-room occupancy facilities. That raised some issues as to what we are, what are we doing with our existing housing stock? So the Planning Commission has analyzed this over several sessions, and what they've come up with is an amendment, a proposed amendment to the SRO ordinance, which will still encourage the building of new SRO or single occupancy, single resident.
Auto room.
Units. But will prohibit them from converting existing housing into SROs. So if people want to do it, they're going to have to create new rooms, or they can take some, perhaps some from our, maybe convert a couple of bars or something like that, because we have 35 of them. But it's going to, it prohibits, all this does is prohibit existing housing from being converted and split up and made into these units.
That's good, that's good. We got it.
But I do have one question. So, we have something on the books, but if I, about, but you want to do a senior citizen Would you have, and so you want to bring people in to live in your home because they're either homeless or seniors, in assisted living or something like that? We couldn't do that.
That's not an SRO.
No, this doesn't.
Because we have something on the books about those, right? You can, okay, yeah. All ready?
I would like to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Avalon, adding Section 9-17.104 to the Avalon Municipal Code prohibiting conversion of existing housing into single-room occupancy facilities.
A second.
Further comment?
Public.
Further comment? But Bobby can talk?
He's up next.
He's getting ready for that.
He's getting ready.
Call for the vote. Rise. Okay.
Okay, item 13.
Item 13.
Item 13, Bob.
Okay, this is an important item, so hang in there. Okay, so.
It's a big one.
In October 2016, City Council authorized the award of a contract to Michael Baker International for a study entitled Avalon Bay Sedimentation Analysis and Conceptual Remediation. This work effort was commissioned to assist the City Council and the staff to identify the possible causes and solution to the beach sand movement in Avalon Bay. We're here to report the findings of that study tonight. We're honored to have Mac Santilla and Dr. Scott Jenkins of MBI to present their findings tonight, so.
Great, thank you.
Is this presentation printed? The study, the report, it was just online because it was.
It was just online. Okay.
So, yeah, there was a draft submitted that is, I guess, currently still in draft form until after this meeting. We've received comments from the city and from the lawyers. We will address those comments in our final, and we've also, we'll come, and we have some other, I guess, edits to the final that we will do before it's finalized. Typically, when that occurs, at least for municipalities or even public water agencies, they don't like to release the documents until they're final, but of course, that is 100% up to you guys. But at this time, I didn't know if we, if this will do just fine, I will just speak like this. Are you guys able to see this?
We got a little.
Oh, okay, good. Well, I'm just going to introduce myself. I am Macrum Shatila, also just go by Mac. I've been working with the City of Avalon here for at least five or six years now, dealing with the, back when we were RBF Consulting, of course, and have moved on to Michael Baker International, working with the sewer repairs, saltwater repairs, some of the paving, asphalt paving, and improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Now, moving on though to this project, I'm the project manager for this project, and I just want to introduce myself and then introduce actually the brains behind all this. This is Dr. Scott Jenkins. He was with the Scripps Institute of Oceanography and has moved on to Michael Baker International for the last couple of years, and he is going to present on our finals.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the advanced key here? There was a remote, but if you want, I can. So just, this is. Okay. Got you. Just a little brief, oh, great, oh, this is great. I've got a laser pointer too. Point, okay. Well, anyway, I also, while at Scripps, ran the innovative sediment management program for the United States Navy for 20 years under Naval Facilities Engineering Command, and I looked at a lot of Navy harbors and their sedimentation problems. So, coming here to the Avalon problem, I have to say it's a little unique from what we usually see in the deep draft Navy harbors, but I think it's pretty obvious what has happened. But first of all, when I first came to Avalon in 1976 on a float plane, South Beach looked like what you see up there in the upper, the upper right-hand corner, and had a nice broad beach. And now today, if you look at the lower-left panel, there is no South Beach. And what we do have, though, is a very large, what we call fillet beach, under Pleasure Pier. And so, the question is, what happened? What made the sand leave South Beach and fill in under Pleasure Pier where it interferes with the small boat operations? And we did a survey in 2017 and compared it against a previous survey done in 1994 by Moffitt and Nickel. And indeed, we did determine that about 5,000 cubic yards had eroded off of South Beach and was deposited under Pleasure Pier. And when I always go to these harbors, I talk to locals first, because I do believe in local knowledge. And one thing I consistently heard were two theories about this cause. One was related to waves and the collapse of these groynes in the lower-left panel there, these groynes that were right near the mouth of the Avalon Creek. And another theory was that the prop wash from the Catalina Express, while it's docking, it runs its. it runs its thrusters in reverse to tension the mooring lines. It's attached to a floating dock. It's at the outer harbor, and it does this to maintain seakeeping, particularly when there are higher swells occurring. But many of the locals felt that this was causing unusual currents in the harbor. So there's three ways of looking at this. Maybe it's the waves that are causing this erosion problem, or maybe it's the prop wash from the Catalina Express. But I'll tell you, our finding is it's, it's actually both when they occur simultaneously, and I'll, I'll explain why. Let's first of all start with the wave component to this problem. We have very good wave data of swell in the Catalina Channel from a number of NOAA buoys and buoys of the Coastal Data Information Program managed by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we pieced together in the left-hand panel, a record of the swells near the mouth of the harbor. We find that the swells that enter the harbor are predominantly from the northeast during Santa Ana wind conditions, or from the southeast when we have the pre-frontal conditions of winter cold fronts. And we did a very detailed refraction, diffraction analysis, an example of which is shown in the right-hand panel of this slide. And the interesting thing about this analysis is that the area around Pleasure Pier and South Beach is actually a wave shadow zone. The way the waves enter the harbor, the most intense waves are over near the tuna club and the yacht club and Step Beach, but there's a diminution in the shoaling wave heights as you get near Pleasure Pier and particularly around South Beach. So that's a little mysterious, but it does tend to de-emphasize the notion that somehow the waves are responsible. And if you want to think about currents that waves can make, it's a very simple axiom. Wave-excited currents, like you see in the surf zone, longshore currents, these currents flow away from areas of high waves towards areas of low waves, which means that the wave shadow zone that you see in the blue area around the Pleasure Pier would be an area of convergence, where wave-driven currents would converge on that area, and if they were moving sand, you'd expect that whole area to be a depositional area, when in fact, a major portion of it is erosional, and only that area under Pleasure Pier is depositional. So that didn't explain the cause and effect relationship. But one thing we do, we do know is that when these waves are large or occur with high tides, we get a lot of wave reflection off the seawall. And when waves strike and reflect off a wall, the wave height doubles. And a doubling of this wave height creates very, very vigorous oscillatory velocities at the base of the seawall that suspend sediment. So in the left-hand panel, you can see waves reflecting off the seawall. They're not particularly large, but you can see all the brown water, indicating how sand has been suspended during the action of reflection. Now, we, we know from the sand size samples we collected, how much wave energy it takes to suspend that, that size of sand, and we measure it with something called the Shields' parameter. And in the right-hand panel, I have plotted for the waves at the mouth of the harbor that you see in red at the top, in green in the middle panel, I've plotted the Shields' parameter at South Beach. And the threshold for the Shields' parameter to suspend the sediment is typically on the order of about 0.1. And about 1.4% of the waves that get into the harbor over this 23-year period create enough reflected wave energy to suspend the sand. So sand suspension by wave reflection is not a common occurrence, but it does happen throughout the entire period of record, 1.4% of the time. Now, as you proceed from South Beach towards Middle Beach, the wave heights get bigger. So at Middle Beach, the percent occurrence of suspension of sand through wave reflection off the seawall is higher. It's roughly about 6% of the time. So even though this is a shadow zone, we do have somewhat infrequent occurrences of the waves being big enough and, and combining with reflective events to erode the beach, to suspend the sand. Now, just because the sand gets suspended, that doesn't tell you where it goes. So, so the next part of the investigation is trying, trying to make that determination. Normally, if I have waves that are just coming straight in, reflecting off a wall, you see that the beach profile undergo seasonal adjustments, which we show in the upper schematic diagram. So, so typically with the longer-period, high-energy waves of winter, you'll get erosion of what we call the inner part of the beach. We call it the bar-burm section. And the sand that's eroded from the bar-burm section deposits offshore in a winter profile shown in the upper panel by the dotted line. And then when you, when you get the higher-frequency summer waves, that sand in the offshore bar moves back onshore. So there's really no net change over a year. You, you get this oscillation of the beach profile, moving sand offshore in winter, but it returns in summer. So when we run our, our computer models using the very state-of-the-art beach equilibrium algorithms, we, we find from the, the measured historic profiles, first of all, starting with the 1994 baseline, which is the dark blue line, we took the biggest waves in the entire period of record, which occurred in January 2007. So we looked at that, that seasonal cycle of 2007 in this lower, lower panel. So what you see happened is that we eroded away from the baseline of dark blue to the red line, which shows how the inner profile eroded in the bar-burm, the upper section of the beach, but created offshore deposition. And as we ran these historic waves into the summer, by August, the, the, the blue line returns. Essentially, there was no net change in the beach over a seasonal cycle. So waves by themselves will cause on-offshore movements of the beach theoretically with no net long-term change. That is, you would see in the winter, South Beach and Middle Beach getting very narrow, but building back in the summer. But we know that, that didn't happen. We had instead a continuous progressive loss of sand at South Beach and a, a progressive accretion of sand building out in this delta-like formation under, under Pleasure Pier. So we now look at the other part of the puzzle, which is the effect of the Catalina Express prop wash. We know from a very excellent study done by UC Irvine in 2010, who placed current meters in several locations in the harbor, that there are very measurable, significant currents along the south seawall while the Catalina Express boats are docked. In the right-hand picture I show you, right off of their webpage, one of their boats docked, you can see the, the surfactant trail coming out from under the bow towards the seawall, indicating that it's creating, its reverse thrust is creating a wake coming towards the seawall. And when that, that prop wash strikes that seawall, it then follows the seawall as a boundary current, and they were able to measure these Catalina Express currents in the right-hand panel. They show in the upper panel of the right-hand, of the left-hand panel, excuse me, in red, the current pulses during weekdays. Typical weekday, there are four of these strong current pulses that last about an hour, and then on weekends, there's about eight of them, shown in the lower panel in blue. So in a typical week, about 36 of these current pulses occur. So the next question is, we know from a couple of current meter measurements that the Catalina Express can make boundary currents along the seawall in the, of the order of 20 centimeters a second. Now, I want to stress, that's not strong enough to scour and erode this, this sand. The sand that we have on South Beach and Middle Beach is, is in the, the range of medium to medium coarse sand, and 20 centimeters a second is not going to suspend it or move it. But let's just see if we can infer what the circulation is in the harbor as a result of having this current source over at the docks at the Cabrillo Mall where the Catalina Express is, is docked. Now, one of the key findings we had during our field survey is something you can't see on Google Earth or in any aerial photography. Under Pleasure Pier, there is an ancient concrete groin. I don't know why it was ever built there. I suspect it was there and then the pier was built over it later. But you see it in this photograph right here. And now, the reason this is important is this thing comes out perpendicular from the shoreline under Pleasure Pier. These groynes form a depositional template. This is well-known in coastal engineering. We build groynes all over the world trying to, to, to save beaches, trying to fortify a beach by building these groynes because if there is a longshore movement of the sand, the groin will stop that movement and force deposition along the face of the groin. So that groin can explain all by itself why you have that deposition under the pier, but how does it interact with the prop wash of the Catalina Express? For that, we went to a high level of computer modeling. It's called computational fluid dynamics. We used a commercially available code, Cosmos Flowworks, and we inferred from several current meter measurements how the circulation in the rest of the harbor looks. And this is what you see. You see this current field coming off of the Catalina Express and striking the south seawall, flowing initially at 20 centimeters a second and gradually declining down to approximately 6 centimeters a second across South Beach. And then, when this boundary current meets that groin field under the, under the Pleasure Pier, it's deflected back out into the harbor, creating what we call a loop current. Now, we have something that can provide some directionality to the sand while the sand is suspended during wave reflection. Now, again, as I said, the Catalina Express prop wash, all by itself, will not move any sand, and you can see that in the slide shown here, where I've actually computed the bottom shear stress. And the bottom shear stress at most is on the order of about 0.12 Pascal. That's a unit of shear stress. But it takes about eight times that to move sand. So nowhere is the Catalina Express ever making enough shear stress on the bottom to move the sand. But let us now combine on the right, the, the circulation pattern of this prop wash with this coastal evolution model, where we add to the coastal evolution model, we combine the wave motion, and then we give this net drift from the Catalina Express prop wash, we superimpose that on the velocity field of the shoaling waves. And what we get is an explanation for the erosion and, of South Beach and the accretion under Pleasure Pier. And so this leads us to the solution. Now, the first thing is that all of the sand in your harbor, or that you had on your beaches, came from Avalon Canyon Creek. And there once was so much sand that I understand you used to do a little bit of sand mining of the beach for aggregate and for concrete and such. But that was, that was 30, 40 years ago. Now you have significantly hardened the lower watershed of the Avalon Canyon Creek. It no longer hasn't, creates all that much sand yield. But what you do have out there offshore in the middle harbor where the loop current has deposited a lot of the sand, and under Pleasure Pier, you have the remnants of your old beach. So you can recycle your sand. It's not going to come back on the beach by itself, so you need to do some remedial dredging. We need to move about 5,000 cubic yards from under Pleasure Pier and spread it out on to South Beach. And so what I've shown in the lower pictures here are what I would call the cut-and-fill templates for a dredge plan, where we would, on the left-hand panel, remove for every yard of beach about 51 cubic yards of sand. We would cut back to this nice black curved profile. It's called the elliptic cycloid. It's the ideal shape of an equilibrium beach. And we would deposit for each yard of shoreline on South Beach about 48 cubic yards of sand, also in an elliptic cycloid shape. So that's, that's, that's phase one. But an important part of that will have to be a demolition and removal of that groin under Pleasure Pier, because that's causing the deposition to occur there. Without that groin, that sand would have continued to move up to Steps Beach and over towards the tuna club and the yacht club. So those are the steps that are needed to restore the beach, and there's several ways of doing it. One would be to bring a floating suction dredge over from, from the mainland. It could be barged over easily, I imagine. It doesn't have to be a very big one either. It could be like a six-inch, a six-inch suction dredge. Or you could do the dredging using a mobile crane operating off of the pier deck, using what's called a Sauerman dragline. And it's merely a bucket that you would drag from one side of the pier underneath it to the other side. And then you would, the crane would lift the bucket and could drop it on, a dump truck on the pier, and the dump truck could go over, drop it on South Beach, and then you could have spreaders, spread it out into the elliptic profile shape. So there's two ways to do the dredging. Now, the next step is somehow we have to break up this compound mechanism. We have two factors that play together to cause this problem in the first place. One is the wave reflection, which is suspending the sand, and then there's the other factor, which is the prop wash of the Catalina Express, which gives the suspended sand a directional movement. And so if you break up either one of those two mechanisms, you'll stop this problem from, from reappearing. So the, the first way would be to prevent significant wave reflection off the seawall. Now, in 1994, Moffett and Nickel wrote you a very nice report. They call a restoration plan for your, for your waterfront, and it involved building a sloping rivetnet. And, and I tested that idea in the numerical model, and indeed, it would reduce the, the reflection events by about a factor of seven to 10. So that, for all intents and purposes, would pretty much eliminate the problem because then your, the numbers of reflections that are causing sand suspension would drop down to, oh, a number on the order of 0.2% of the time. So it would probably take 100 years for, you know, the, the beach to disappear at that, that low rate. The other would be, there's commercially available wave-absorbing systems, one's called the Igloo. These have come out of Denmark and out of, out of Norway, but they're much more expensive. The problem with these two approaches is you have to put a structure seaward over your seawall, and the footprint of that structure is going to take up the beach you're trying to restore. So, so you follow me? You're, you're going to actually, to stop losing the beach, you're going to have to build something on top of the beach that you just dredge to, you know, restore by dredging. So, so there's, that's, that's the biggest downside to that, that approach. Plus, it's, these are pretty expensive. You would have to build these structures across South Beach and Middle Beach, at least up to Steps Beach. The other would be to intervene with the Catalina Express prop wash. We tested a very simple idea of building a deflection wall, a very simple vertical wall that would jut out from the south seawall immediately south of that floating dock where I believe the, the Catalina, classic cruise docks, you know, the, the ones that are shuttling the passengers from, from the big boats. passengers from the big boats. Yeah. Well, you can see it here where I've got it diagrammed in the slide there. So we tested 100-foot-long deflection wall in the model. It works just fine. You see, what it does is it deflects the prop wash out into the middle harbor where it just dissipates. Now, we could probably, we haven't had, we didn't have the budget to test a lot of other length of wall, but it's very likely we could get by with a shorter wall. We would, we would want to play around with that in the modeling exercise to see what it would be the minimum length of wall that would actually accomplish this job. But there are several ways to build this, all of them relatively cheap compared to the revetment alternatives. One is to do corrugated sheet pile with rubble mound footing. Another is to do a king pile groin-type structure where you would drive two parallel rows of piles with vinyl sheet pile in between the two rows of piles. And the last would be a Seakin box structure, which is similar to a king pile, except you're using two sheet pile sheets with small rock filled into it to create a box. So all of those could be built, we think, relatively cheaply. So here was our relative cost comparisons. We factored in everything from materials and construction, design, construction inspection, fees for city staff administration, contingencies. And we came up with the deflection wall as the cheapest alternative at about $850K as compared to these revetments or wave absorbers along the seawall, which were coming in in the range of $7 to $13 million. Now, there are, there is one other option, which would be a non-structural approach, and that's to make some modifications to the way, to operational procedures of the Catalina Express. Now, I want to be very delicate with this because they've brought over 25 million visitors to your island, and they're, the Catalina Express is just vital to this community. And what they're doing right now is the result of years of experience. They do it for sound reasons that are related to seakeeping out there. The docks they tie up to are floating docks, and they're subject to relatively mild sea states, even though they're just inside the breakwater out there. And they run these engines with reverse thrust to tension not just the mooring lines of the Catalina Express of the floating dock, but also to tension the floating dock mooring to the Cabrillo Mall. And so you could, first of all, do some, perhaps some adjustments to that mechanical setup of how they're moored right now. If you look at the Catalina Express floating dock in Long Beach Harbor, they have key piles on their floating docks so that those floating docks wouldn't have to be tensioned. They would just rise and fall with the tide with these key piles. The other would be to arrange, rearrange perhaps the bollards and cleats and use forward thrust to tension the docks. Now, I could understand why they wouldn't like that idea, but forward thrust would just simply send their prop wash out into the central harbor, much like the deflection wall does. But if they had a mooring failure, the Catalina Express would ram the seawall and perhaps sink the vessel. So I could easily understand their reticence to using forward thrust as opposed to reverse thrust to tension the present moorings. And then the other would be what the Catalina Flyers are doing right now. After they load and, after they offload or, you know, in between loading and offloading passengers, they could moor out in the central harbor rather than sit there for several hours running their engines in reverse. If you notice, those current spikes that are caused by the Catalina Express last for several hours each. So those are just some other suggestions of how to manage this problem.
You said the spikes last a couple hours?
Depends, yeah.
Yeah, because the boats are only usually there for 20 minutes, I think.
Well, it depends, Joe. Let's look at these spikes here.
Forty-five, okay. Yeah, it's constant, coming in and out.
Yeah. So here's like, you know, if you look at the upper panel there, there's like six hours between, like, two of those spikes, four hours between two of those spikes, and I don't know, maybe they're just an hour long each, but still, they're not just simple impulses. They run them for enough time where if waves are reflecting off the seawall at the same time, sand will move. And granted, the sand moves little by little, but when you accumulate enough of these events of Catalina Express dockings with wave reflections over a 23-year period, as has happened, you lose your whole beach. So it's like a Walmart effect, you know? Many paintings make lots of dollars. So each docking event makes a small amount of movement if waves are reflecting off the seawall at the same time, and that small amount of movement accumulates over time to create eventually a large loss of beach.
What, you know, there was old, the fingers that were out there before that you had a picture of in the first slide?
Yeah. They probably serve much like the deflection wall that we proposed.
So that was like the modern solution for back when they designed that? Is that why those fingers were there?
Well, it's not clear why they built them originally. I believe they were built just as simple beach groins to try to stabilize the beach. But they weren't very long, and they surely deflected prop wash away from the beach so it didn't affect as much of South Beach. But they're very localized to the wing walls of the mouth of Avalon Canyon Creek. So they are technically groins and...
Is there a finding, is it part of tide issues? I have a lot.
Yeah, the reflection events are, can happen with relatively mild wave heights if they're combined with high tide. And then when you get really large waves, more, lower tides will still create reflection. But the combination of waves and high tides are the most problematic.
That one picture you had with the express boat against the dock?
Yes.
There was a building.
That one?
Oh, look at the two flags.
Ah, okay. Well, again, that, see, that's why they do that. It's for seakeeping out there. Yeah.
So I just have a, I asked this of staff, and I'm not an engineer. So these simultaneous events that occur, that cause the sand to be brought up and then deposited, how predictable are these wave events? Such that, I mean, if they're totally unpredictable, I get that. But if they're predictable, would it be possible to adjust the little schedule and have the boat stay out in the harbor for five minutes while this event occurred and then come in? So it's not simultaneous.
Well, first of all...
I just want to ask the question.
No, that's a good question.
I get it.
The meteorological conditions that create the northeast and southeast swells are predictable out to seven to 10 days ahead. Now, the actual event itself, and particularly when coupled to tides, I mean, we know the tides years in advance. So we can predict when a high tide is going to occur and how long it's going to last. And as I say, the high tide combined with a severe weather event, the severe weather event itself is predictable up to about seven to 10 days using the latest global forecast models, the ECMWF and such. And you can go on the internet and get these predictions very handily. They're updated every 12 hours.
So then how long does one of these wave events last?
Well, I mean, we know Santa Ana's will last sometimes two, three days.
You can change the schedule every day.
But the, but the prefrontal conditions are much briefer, typically a day or less.
Would that, the solution, number three, I believe it was, the $850,000, that wall that goes out directly into the harbor?
Right.
From the seawall?
Correct.
Would that be above the water or that would be down below?
No, no, that would be above the water, and I would expect it would be level with the walkway, and you could, I mean, you'd need navigation hazard lights, but you might even put something on top of it, like a small pier deck or something, you know, might get some other use out of it.
Oh, really? Okay.
You know, it could be a dual-use structure.
Oh, okay. Really? Oh, my goodness. That changes everything.
Oh, the dredging costs? The dredging costs, let me get to the cost table. I didn't put the, did I put the, oh, it's in my report. Well, basically, the dredging cost, about $10,000. It's about 25 bucks a cubic yard, and then there's mobilization and demobilization. And about half of the cost is mobilization and demobilization to bring the equipment over.
You should be standing up at the mic.
David, you got to stand up. We need to hear you.
My question was, the difference between the cost of the actual suction, because you could suck the sand and redeposit it, or the cost between the crane and, it had a specific name?
Sauerman bucket.
Sauerman bucket.
Okay, well, the nice thing about the suction dredge is you have the dredge working right by the pier on its own floating barge, and it just has a floating pipeline over to the beach. So it sucks the sand up off the bottom and pumps it directly to the beach. The Sauerman bucket has a crane that has to pick the sand up, put it in a dump truck, and then haul it over to the beach, drop it on the beach, and then spread it. And they're roughly comparable costs. I think the cleanest way is the suction dredge, because it's not going to interfere with your traffic, and you won't need trucks on, you know, on your pedestrian way and that kind of thing.
Mayor, could I ask a question? So what I hear you saying, or I think I hear you saying, is that the deflection wall, which is actually, even with the dredging, is less, the least expensive option?
Right.
That, are you saying then that if those actions were taken, that the beach, South Beach, would be restored and that it would prevent in the future from the recurrence of a loss of beach or?
Correct. You would see seasonal changes, a narrowing of the beach in the winter and a build back in the summer, but you wouldn't have that progressive net loss, nor would you have that progressive net deposition building out under the pier that, you know, interferes with Joe's operation. So yes, it would stop that. And the other thing, too, is the retention of new sand that comes out of Avalon Creek would be high, because you got rid of the mechanism that's sweeping the sand away, which is the prop wash. So you will still get new sand from Avalon Creek, Avalon Canyon Creek, but, you know, it would take a long time for the beach to build back naturally just from that sediment yield because so much of the watershed's been hardened.
Can you have someone behind you, sir?
Just one quick question. What would be the effects if you were to back up that seawall to like, say, the swim line, just line it with K-rail or something like that? Would you get the same effect of retaining that beach?
Well, you're still going to have, even if I move the seawall back, I'm still going to have a hard vertical barrier, right?
Right.
All I've done is I moved it landward. So you're still going to get wave reflection. So all I've done is displaced the problem inland. It's still there. So that's...
But wouldn't you retain that beach?
Well, you'd get, you would, yeah, if you moved the wall back, I would get new beach. Yeah, that's true.
Because you're either going to have to displace five or six moorings to make that seawall, or you're going to have to...
You mean the deflection wall?
Yeah, the deflection wall.
And then you're, now, your plan is to demolish the seawall and move it back? Is that what you're doing?
No, no, just don't put the, don't put the deflection wall in. Move it back to, say, the swim line, where the swim line is.
Oh, can you show me where?
K-rail, right, where the swim line is.
Show me where you mean. So here's the deflection wall. Tell me what your thought is.
So back it up to where the swim line is, right here?
Yeah. Yeah, you could move it there.
With K-rail, wouldn't that be a $40,000 fix?
Well, I mean, you can put, you can put the deflection wall other places, but right now, moving it where you've shown it, I'm going to be deflecting it over to Pleasure Pier. It's got to, I got to make, we're going to have to keep the, keep in mind the bottom gets deeper as you go out from South Beach. We're going to have to keep the deflection wall east of South Beach far enough so that we're at the closure depth of the beach profile, which is on the order of about minus 20 feet. So we could move the deflection wall this way, but we don't want to move it any further than where the 20-foot-depth contour is out here. At the 20-foot-depth contour, there is no movement of sand from way back here for these short waves that get into the harbor.
Unfortunately, K-rails, although it seems sturdy enough, but against the power of the...
Up to the mic, please. Sorry.
I was just going to say, you know, unfortunately, K-rails, under the forces of the ocean, just would not work, and they would then be thrown on your beach in a major storm.
Eventually.
The other thing we could look at as part of the rebuilding of the mall is figure out a docking system that the Express can turn their engines off and stay in neutral. I mean, any one of those abutment walls, blocking of the waves, or the Express stopping, turning their engines off and put them in neutral will create the, create what we need for it to create. So if we put an abutment wall down past a wet spot, you know, that's not an all-bad thing, because you can build that up for another, a small pier like it's what's there and be able to rent it out. Granted, you're going to lose, you're going to lose some moorings, and, you know, I mean, I don't think Jay's going to appreciate that, but, you know, those are the things that we have to discuss. But we have, I have been in contact with Don Beaumont from Nelson and Beaumont, and we've talked with Greg, and we've tried to figure out a way of being able to not have the Express put their boat, put their boats in gear. Figure out a docking system they can dock and not do that. So, I mean, this is an excellent, an excellent study, and it gives it a lot of food for thought, so.
I also work with Alaska Marine Highway, and I suggest you all look on their website. They have that docking system in place, that none of the ships put their vessels in gear, and they're 300 to 500-foot ships, and it would be a great system for the mall.
What's it called?
Alaska Marine Highway.
Oh, Alaska Marine Highway?
Yeah, I just go online. There's thousands of pictures of them tied up to their docks, and the weather in Alaska is typically, you know, twice what it is here, even during the northeast condition.
Okay.
Just one more comment that, you know, we do intend, if we are able to investigate this further, of looking at options where they could moor in neutral, and I think, as you'd mentioned, there's one alternative that wasn't listed up there, because we kind of just thought about it on the way here, actually, was ways to have the floating docks not be so, I guess, floating, so they only are floating up and down instead of loosely as they are now. And you can see that if you do take the ones at Long Beach, Catalina Express at Long Beach. Of course, that is a much milder environment, but there still could be done. We would just, of course, have to engineer and find out how much more, you know, maybe they have one at each end, maybe you would need two at each end type of thing, of some type of sheet pile, and now it can just move up and down but not float all around. If that's the case, they then could be in neutral and possibly do away with the wall. So there's just many more alternatives that need to be investigated.
Yeah. Oh, interesting.
What are the next steps, I guess, is what?
Next step of the quarter.
Any other comments? Questions?
No, but I do have a question. I think the two gentlemen have kind of been related, but related to the sea. Sea level rise. Is that something we need to be concerned about, Mr. PhD?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Doctor?
That's okay. You call me Scotty.
Okay. I'm just, you know, there's always the debate about sea level rise. It's something that I'm concerned with.
Oh, yes, yes.
And here we are in this little town. What, can you give us some free advice about what we should be doing?
Well... Well, first of all, it's really interesting. You know, we have the California Coastal Commission Sea Level Rise Guidance Document, and it shows this, two curves that, you know, are basically saying that sea level by the end of the, well, by, first of all, by 2050 is going to be as much as three feet higher than it is now. And then that same model says by 2100, it'll be about almost six feet higher. And yet, when NOAA recently leveled their tide gauges all over the West Coast...
National Oceanic Administration, NOAA?
Yeah, NOAA, yeah. They run all of the tide gauges, and we have quite a few of them here in California, about 40 of them. Only a few inches of sea level rise has been observed, nothing more than what we've seen for the last 100 years. And so this has got a lot of the oceanographers scratching their head going on. And so the current idea is that, well, we haven't actually seen the sea level rise yet here on the West Coast because what's happened is the North Pacific gyre has spun up. It's spinning faster, and that creates what they call Ekman drift away from the West Coast, and that suppressed the sea level rise. I mean, that's, you know. Now, there's no denying, I think, that global warming is going on, and there's several factors of global warming that do cause sea level rise. But when you look at the global warming trends over the ocean, year by year, there's a hotspot here in that one area, one year, the next, there's a hotspot over there, and it just moves all over the place. There's no systematic buildup of heat in the ocean to cause sterile sea level rise yet. Now, it may happen, but I just want you to know that it's still quite a subject of debate how much sea level rise we might see in our lifetime. But that being the case, as sea level rises, it'll be a hazard to all of our beaches. It'll try to drown our beaches, and the only way to fight that is more sand on the beach. Now, you're fortunate here. I only cited the little sand reserves you have under Pleasure Pier, but your whole cove, your whole harbor is a depositional basin. You have all kinds of ancient beach sand out there that you could dredge in the future and build as much beach as you want to keep pace with sea level rise. But eventually, if it proceeds to the levels they're talking about, you might have to think about raising the height of that seawall to keep downtown from flooding during the big storms, you know, the big waves.
So you raise that seawall up high that nobody can, that they go to the beach and they can't see the water?
Yeah, I know. Now, but here's the other, the staff of the California Coastal Commission is trying to sell a concept of managed retreat. They don't want any new, they don't want wallification of our coastline. They don't want people building seawalls or raising seawalls. They fight every new seawall application that comes across their desk. So I don't know how it's going to get resolved, but there's a certain scientific ideology in place right now at Coastal Commission that says no seawalls and managed retreats the way we're going to have what we call coastal resiliency. And my answer to that is, let's just use nature's best wave energy absorber, and that's a sandy beach. My solution is a soft solution of building our beaches, not building walls first and foremost. And you have a good source of sand right inside your own harbor. You don't have to go far for it.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins, thank you very much for doing this study for us. It was very comprehensive and insightful, and it's going to be useful for us to preserve our beaches.
Okay. Hopefully that was entertaining.
It was good.
So our recommendation is to accept the report. And to investigate the details, the scope, cost, schedule, and funding sources to implement deflection wall and the restoration dredging, but it should be noted that there could be other solutions as we dig into those details, shorter wall placement of that wall. So that's what I'm looking for, this team right here, to continue on, get a proposal from them to continue on to provide other details. So I'll be asking them for a proposal so I could come next council meeting and see if you agree with that and to move forward. So it really, it depends on how fast you want to do this.
That was I was going to ask. I mean, by next summer? No?
There's permitting involved.
Yeah.
So...
With the Coastal Commission.
Coastal Commission. So there'll be that piece, that easy piece. And then there's the funding issue, you know, that we'll be needing. If we went with this, it'd be 1.15 million. How do we raise that? There is grants available that we did talk to Division of Boating and Waterways, but, you know, that could be future years of the state budget. So it's really that, how fast do we want to get this done? I think there's plenty of solutions. And so that's what the recommendation that we're looking for, to bring back a proposal to you next council meeting.
Okay. So directed.
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion to accept the study to receive and file a report, or are we good there?
Not the final report, though.
It's not the final report. It's a draft report.
Okay.
So we'll just accept it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And you did that rather well. I understood a lot of it.
Yeah, that was actually really well done. All right.
Close session. We're not, we're going into closed session?
Yeah, we have two closed sessions, performance evaluation for City Manager as well as labor negotiations, City Manager.
Okay, we're going to say goodnight, Tony, and thank you all for sticking with us.